We'll call the meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission meeting to order. The May 26, 2020 City Council meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920. City Council chambers will be closed to the public. Planning Commissioners will participate by Zoom. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated March 17, 2020, the City Council is authorized to hold meetings via teleconferencing and to make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and address the legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of the City Council and the public for a City Council meeting are waived. John Ebner is calling on teleconference. Madam Secretary, City Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Councilmember Bertone.
Here.
Councilmember Ebner.
Here.
Mayor Protam Vienna.
Here.
Councilmember Weber. Councilmembers are all in attendance.
Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Quick question, is the reason why we moved the flag over to here because of this TV set? Thank you. Okay, we have oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item that is not on the agenda. Under the provisions of the Ground Act, the legislative body is prohibited from taking or engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for discussion at a later date. If you desire to address the City Council on any item on the agenda other than the scheduled public hearings, items you may do so at this time or ask to be heard when the agenda item is considered. Comments on the public hearing items will be considered when each, when that item is scheduled for discussion. The public consent period is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker shall have a limited of three minutes. Do we have any calls?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, I'm calling about a possible apartments. Building in Via Verde in San Dimas.
You are muted.
Caller, can you please mute your TV or internet?
Okay, hi.
Hi, welcome. You want to try again? We didn't understand anything you said.
Hello, I can't really hear you that well. Hello?
Well, we can hear you. Can you try? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm calling about apartments built in San Dimas and Via Verde area.
Not sure I understand what you're talking about. You said apartments in Via Verde?
Yeah, I heard that there would be apartments being built in the area of Via Verde, in the Von Shopping Center.
I believe she's referring to the 16 sites in SP 23 that were identified. One of them is in Via Verde.
Okay, I'll go ahead and tell me what you want to say. We can't really respond back and forth, but as of this moment, there are no apartments being built in Via Verde or right now any one of the 16 sites that have been identified. So that's best I can tell you at this point.
Yeah, well, we heard it was a possibility. I don't know, we saw it on social media.
All I can tell you at this point, ma'am, that there are no apartment buildings approved in the Via Verde area or any of the 16 sites identified by the, by.
But Mayor.
Planning Department.
But of course, sorry, Mayor, the member of the public can provide any comments she has supporting or opposing apartments, though, if that's what she'd like to talk about.
Did you understand what the city attorney just said, ma'am?
Hello?
Yeah, you can speak either for it or against it, and we'll take note of that.
Okay, we're against it.
We're against it?
Yeah. Yes, we're against it.
All right.
It's hard to hear the conversation.
Okay, you know what? If you would like to, maybe tomorrow, you could call and speak to Brad McKinney or the City Clerk, so they could get your information and be able to contact you back and let you know if anything was to go forward on this.
Okay, all right, I'll do that, because I'm having a hard time with this conversation. Thank you.
No, thank you. Do we have any others?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Hello?
Most familiar members of the council, Jan Bartelwagen, calling back.
Okay, Jan, go ahead.
Okay, this time I would like to streak, or excuse me, speak in strong opposition to the possibility of building low-income housing or multifamily units, 1,245 of them, to be exact, at any of the various locations possibly identified throughout the city of San Dimas. I feel myself that this type of housing would bring about a potential detrimental impact on property values and potentially the quality of life in our surrounding areas and our community. I think it definitely would have an adverse impact on desirability to either live and/or buy property located in the neighborhood or community where these types of developments were to be placed. I think it also has an impact. Demographically, it changes, and whether or not it's from a racial or socio-economical composition within the neighborhood or the community, it does change, and it does, in fact, correlate oftentimes to an increase in potential sale to property and loss of property values. I would like to say that I believe the city zoning ordinances were set in place and for a reason to make sure that ill-advised decisions weren't implemented in terms of, you know, commercial business or multifamily residential or whatever doesn't belong in R1, single-family residential dwelling, and to modify existing zoning ordinances to establish potential guidance, I guess, to use this land and put it for development of the multi-housing units, I think would be detrimental to the community in general. I will tell you this, I was very active on social media with this subject matter in the past few days, and I've seen numerous comments being posted with people in pretty strong opposition to this. I understand the state is mandating it, and this isn't entirely, you know, proposed by the City Council by yourselves, but collectively, I would like to ask the City Council to take a stand, a united stand to preserve and protect our community, our existing zoning ordinances, and not give the ability to present this type of development of low-income multifamily housing density. And I think what the previous caller was referring to was that the one reference was in regards to, it looked like it might be the Von Shopping area, about nine-point-something acres, and, you know, clearly, the residents in this community use it, whether it's the market, the prescription, the pharmacy, whatever, and to possibly consider the destruction of that shopping center to create multifamily density, low-income housing would just not be something that I think a lot of people in this community would appreciate.
All right.
So if we can request the City Council, yeah, please take a strong stand as far as how the residents in this community feel on this.
Okay, Jan, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Do we have any more calls? Okay, being told that there are no additional calls, we'll move along with consent calendar.
I move approval, but I'd like to just mention one thing. Item number F, which is the last one, is an update from Marissa Krieter, who is the Executive Director of the San Gabriel Valley Cog, or the Activities of the Cog. So if you're interested in some of the activities, take a look at item F, and if you have questions, you may ask me at some time or Brad, and we can get the information for you. I move approval.
Okay, before we do that, I'm just going to read, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council requests separate discussion. I think Dennis has moved approval, and he talked about item F. Second. Any conversation? Any objections? Hearing none, we'll move forward.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I'd like to remove 4D and 4E for separate discussions to question staff.
Okay, at the request of Councilman Ebner, we'll remove item 4D and 4E. Okay, so the rest of the consent calendar, with the exception of D and E, we have a vote and nomination of a first and a second. Any further? Okay, move approval, hearing none. Okay, when John will take on.
Mayor, because Councilmember Ebner is on the phone, we have to do a roll call vote.
Okay, so roll call vote for consent calendar minus D and E.
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Vote.
Vote, yes.
Councilmember Bertone. Councilmember Ebner.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Vienna.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Okay, good conversation on item D. John?
Yes, I had a question for staff on that one. So this involves a custodial maintenance contract, and I understand that the amount of the contract will be, it looks like it's going to be $55,000 a year, so that's a 50% increase in the contract over this year. I read the report, and staff can make any comments they want to, and it does provide for additional services, but I had one question, and that's whether any of the, and I asked Brad Stewart about this earlier, so I'd like to hear the answer publicly. If any of the work that this, the outfit for this contract is going to do is going to replace work that our building maintenance assistance do?
Hector Kisserman is Marson Rick and the overall supervisor for that. Hector, would you like to respond back to John, please?
Yes, so, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The contract is an additional $50,000 a year. We are requesting, recommending a three-year contract to Valley Maintenance Corporation. To answer Councilmember Ebner's question, no staff hours are, no existing staff hours are being replaced with this contract. The cost for, the budget line item for building maintenance assistance is actually remaining flat, or there may be a slight deduction, because typically, we schedule enough hours to have roughly about seven building maintenance assistants. However, filling those positions is extremely difficult because of the fact that the hours are very limited, and they are not, you know, a routine schedule. It could be, you know, evening one day, morning the next, and so, and it's, you know, in two-hour increments here and there. So that's why those hours that are being taken away to then put that cost into, or those savings into the contract. So I guess to answer your question, Councilmember Ebner, no one has been furloughed or hours will be cut as a result of this.
What's the net savings or cost, then Hector, on the, so the contracts, instead of like around $100,000, it's $150,000 for, $155,000. And then you were mentioning that we're not replacing some building maintenance assistance, which is great. So where, that we don't need, where, so where are we? Are we saving money or are we spending extra money? Or what's the general feel you have for that?
Yes, so it's almost, it's a little more, because I believe the cost in the building maintenance assistance was about $35,000 or maybe $40,000 from 135,000 to 95,000 a year. So, and the new contract is an additional $54,000, but that is because of additional services that they are providing. You know, through this COVID-19 pandemic, we have had to pay closer attention to disinfecting our buildings, facilities, and this contract would do that. In addition, the contractor that is currently here working for the city has had several deficiency issues where they're not abiding to or adhering to their contract, and so it was an opportunity for us to also revise the current specifications and scope of services that had not been done for over 15 years. So we've added a few more things. For example, rather than a BMA going out and closing the restrooms, the restroom will be closed, locked, seven days a week by the contractor, who also will perform the cleaning. So the next morning, it'll just be opened by our staff, and the restrooms will be clean, as opposed to going out in the morning to clean them. So we gained some advantages there. There will also be a day porter at the senior center to serve that building, because with our programs, once we get back into the programs there with the senior services, it's important that we maintain those facilities extra clean, so there is a day porter who will be there most of the day, eight hours a day, to attend to the needs of that building. So that's where the increases in costs come from.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Hector. I had a question about the next one, too, for E.
E.
And, yeah, E, that's about the multi-use trail maintenance, or repair, actually. So that's in this year's budget for $100,000, coming in at $91,000 for the contract that we're going to vote on. I was just wondering, though, with all of the discussion about the budget, where certain things are being cut, others are not being cut, that this close to the end of the budget year, even though it's in this year's budget, it seems that we should discuss it along with all of the other things we're deciding to spend money on or not spending, spend money on. So I question the timing of this contract.
Hector, you want to respond to that?
So, yes, the contract had, I mean, the, this was a budgeted amount and considered to be one of the things that took priority last year when we slated funding for the specific projects that we have. If you look at your page two of the report, you can see the conditions of the trail as they currently are. This is near the Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Center, and so this continues, this erosion that is depicted is an ongoing issue after every rain. So by not doing this, we are just incurring more and more maintenance costs to have to go up there and replace the soil that gets eroded. That also is problematic as far as meeting MPDES regulations, because we have storm, we have debris going into storm drains, or down, into potentially going down into storm drains.
Thank you, and I understand that. So I'd like to vote separately on these two issues. I can support the building maintenance contract. I think that's a good one, and it's not really a change in the amount of money. However, the almost $100,000 for this one, I think it's necessary. However, I think it should be stacked up against all the other priorities of the coming budget year, which literally starts in a month. So it should just be out there, and I certainly would probably approve it. I just think it's, we shouldn't be like having these one-offs where, even though it's in the budget, it's $100,000, and when we're talking about cutting, you know, millions from the budget, it'd be a good thing to be in there. So this one, I'll vote against if we vote on it today. I'd support it later, but, so, yeah, so if we could have two votes separately, I'd appreciate it.
Can I ask one thing on that? If we're talking erosion of the trail and this being $91,000 allocated to repair that surface, in addition to all the other benefits that you're talking about, is there any potential, if we neglect to repair that surface, is exposing the city to any potential liability?
The city has generally trail, what's called trail immunity in the government code, so it seems like the risk of that would be low.
Thank you.
And Hector, just refresh my memory, I'm just trying to think. I think there was a project proposal to put a debris flow basin up in that park, which would have offset some of this damage and erosion. Is that kind of where, if I remember when this came up, I think Kershna was talking about this, and this is an ongoing issue that would be treated by that potentially? Is that true?
That catch basin or detention basin is on the west side, or would have been on the west side potentially of the park. The entire hills up there, whether you're on the east or the west side of the park, has this sheeting that comes off those hills after a rain. So not necessarily directed to this one, however, that other one does impact the playground area and some of the trails on that side. This here comes more like from the barren areas or the parking, overflow parking lot areas up there, and then washes down past the arena, down into the trail, down the road.
Perfect, thanks.
And just a quick question, when you're talking about what the surface is, the material is being used, is that similar to the fill that's being done at the very part for the walk?
Yes, it is. It's the exact product, which is a wax-based polymer, erosion-proof, stabilized decomposable granite.
So it'd be the same thing as the walking surface?
Correct. Correct. And I don't know if you've had a chance to walk up there yet to see that project.
I haven't had a chance to walk myself, but I've heard some real positive, positive things on it, and I'm really happy that you guys now have moved to the east side of that to get it done, so. All I can tell you is people are, at the donut shop, are telling me that I'm pretty pleased. So other than that, getting there to walk yet, maybe I have to ask my wife to get over there and walk, so. Okay, I guess, John, we're going to take this in two sections, so consent calendar, item D, do I have a?
Move approval.
All in favor? Aye, it'll be a roll call.
Mayor Bedar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone.
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner.
Is this item D as in dog?
Item D.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Vienna.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
The vote reflects a 5-0. All in favor?
This will be item E.
Second.
Roll call.
One last comment about this, for the item E as in Emmett. I am not against the project, I think it's a great project, but I don't think it's good policy to be doing one at a time like this, since it's so close to the budget, that we just have such consternation, and Hector has cut 1.6 million dollars out of his desired budget to meet the emergency budget. I think we should just throw that into the mix as well. But anyway, that's enough said, and I'll be, I will be voting no.
Hector, just so I'm clear, this was already in the budget, though, correct? Thank you.
It doesn't matter whether it's in the budget or not, because if it would just add $100,000 to our reserve, and then we could have that money to spend in the next budget, we should.
Well, John, I don't disagree with picking and choosing projects, but, I mean, this was in the budget. If we want to pick and choose, we should stop everything, and let's just go into it. I mean, this was budgeted. We should stay true to what we committed to, to the community.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Roll call.
Mayor Bedar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone.
Yes.
Mayor Protam, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ebner.
No, thanks for the promotion.
Mayor Protam Vienna.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
The motion passes with a four to one vote, with Councilmember Ebner voting no.
So that'll be the end of the consent calendar. Public hearings, public hearing regarding open space maintenance District One Boulevard and the adoption of the resolution of confirming the assessment. Staff?
Mayor, City Council, I call on Parks and Recreation Director Hector Kisserman to
Good evening. So every year, these items come before you. The city does still have two landscape maintenance assessment districts, known as Boulevard, as well as Northwoods. On April 28, 2020, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 2020-22, approving the engineer's report and declaring its intention to levy and collect an assessment for fiscal year 2021 for Open Space Maintenance District Number One, Track 32818 Boulevard, and set a public hearing for today, May 26, 2020. The engineer's report was prepared with the scope of work to include general maintenance, landscape maintenance, tree trimming, water, and electricity. No increase in, is proposed in the assessment rate. The 2019-2020 assessment rate was $532.58 per parcel, and the rate proposed for this coming year, 2020, 2021, will remain the same at $532.58. A notice of the public hearing was published and mailed to each property owner within the district. Tonight, staff is recommending that the City Council, one, conduct a public hearing on the proposed assessment rates for Open Space Maintenance District Number One Boulevard, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, the City Council may adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2021 for Open Space Maintenance District Number One Boulevard. This next item is much like the first, which is, it's to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for Open Space Maintenance District Number One, Track Number 32841, Northwoods. The case is the same here, the assessments will not increase, they will remain the same as this year at $898.42 per parcel. Notice was sent in the mail to these residents, and staff recommends that the City Council, one, conduct public hearing on the proposed assessment rate for Open Space Maintenance District Number One, Track Number 32841, Northwoods, and then at the conclusion of this public hearing, that the council adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2020-2021 for this Open Space Maintenance District, Track Number 32841, Northwoods. That concludes my report, and can answer any questions if there are any.
Now they open up the public hearing. Anybody have any questions of Hector?
Fantastic that we were able to keep the price the same over these years.
Okay, thank you. John, you have anything to ask of Hector?
John, you have anything to ask of Hector on this?
Nope, thanks.
Okay, they'll open up the public hearing, do we have any calls?
Mayor, just to be clear, this is the public hearing on both of the items.
Right. No calls? Okay, we'll take, we should take each vote separately, okay, so could you go ahead and read the resolution by title? Resolution twenty-two, twenty-eight.
Resolution twenty-two, eighty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 for Open Space Maintenance District Number One, tract three-two-eight-one-eight Boulevard.
Move approval, wait for the reading. Second.
We have a roll call vote?
Mayor Bedar?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Vienna?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
The vote reflects a five-zero vote in favor.
Okay, would you read Resolution twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two-nine?
Resolution twenty-two, twenty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021 for Open Space Maintenance District Number One, annexation number three, tract three-two-eight-four-one, Northwoods.
Do you, all in favor, read by roll call?
All move approval and wait for the reading.
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
That passes by five-zero vote.
Okay, we'll move on to other business, annual approval of Public Education and Governmental Access Channel, PEG fee.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I call Michael O'Brien, our Administrative Services Manager, to present the item.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse, good evening, Mayor and Council, Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Manager. In September of 2006, the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act, Commission Act of 2006 went to effect, which allowed video service providers to obtain a state-issued franchise to provide video services in a local community. In October 2008, the City Council adopted ordinance eleven-eighty-three, establishing San Dimas rights under Divka, and that allowed the city to adopt an up to one percent peg fee to be paid by all video subscribers to fund public access. This fee is only opposed to video subscribers who have a peg channel available to them and residents who do not subscribe to Frontier or Spectrum Communications and therefore do not have the channel available to them or not impacted by the fee. So basically, this goes to pay for the services to run the channel. Currently, the contract is budgeted to be around eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Because of some cable cutting or cord cutting, as they say, we are projected to only receive about seventy-six thousand, five hundred in fees in order to subsidize the operations of the cable channel, plus any equipment that we believe we would need to purchase, which runs the budget to about ninety-four thousand dollars. There's about five thousand budgeted for any additional equipment we need to buy. In this nineteen-twenty year, we did include a purchase of some high-definition equipment to help increase the quality of the streaming service. We are having issues with enhancing the cables, you know, version of that, because the cable channels just won't provide a high-definition channel for this community channel, so it's kind of limited our ability to really enhance that channel. But basically, this will just make sure that we can continue to have the funds to operate this channel, and without it, it makes doing any enhancements just basically impossible. So with that, I recommend that we approve the one percent peg fee and continue that assessment.
It should be stressed that this only applies to people that have cable television, right?
Correct, as I.
So if you don't have cable, then you're not charged this fee.
Any other?
I move approval. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor, since it's a resolution, we should have a reading of the resolution first.
Okay, would you read it by title please, twenty-two, thirty?
Resolution twenty-two, thirty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, setting the public access fee for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021 to be used for peg purposes.
Yeah, the motion of.
Yeah, we had the motion in second. Motion was by Councilmember Bertone, second was Mayor Protam Vienna.
Okay.
Mayor Bedar, your vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertone?
Aye.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Passes by five-zero vote.
All right, we'll move forward to, first question is, is the air conditioning on in this room? Seems like it's also warm.
The mask, it doesn't help.
Okay, thank you. There's got a, the Planning Commission is a joint council with the City Council, can I have a roll call of the Planning Commission, please?
Chairman Bratt? Vice Chair Davis?
Hi, here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Molina?
Here.
And Commissioner Ross?
Here.
The record will reflect all commissioners are in attendance.
Is there a way to get the volume turned up on that place? Okay, can I have a report, I guess Marco?
Yes, good evening. Before I start, I'd like to mention that we did receive a number of public comments that should be on the dais for you. Some are emails and some are letters. Those were also emailed to the Planning Commissioners and Councilman Ebner for his review also. So I'll go ahead and start with my presentation. So on March tenth, 2020, we had a joint study session held with the Planning Commission and the City Council to discuss the status of the moratorium for SP twenty-three and to review what we had received, I'm sorry, to get direction from both parties on the next step of the process. At the study session, staff presented an overview of the work that had been performed previously. We also discussed the outcome of the survey that had been conducted, as well as the results of the community meetings that we had had previously. At the meeting, and we also discussed what the outcomes were of the different meetings with the different property owners of SP twenty-three. At the study session, the City Council directed staff to analyze the entire site, including SP twenty-three properties, to provide the City Council with a preliminary, and I said very preliminary, site inventory list that may be suitable to meet the city's regional housing needs, the arena numbers, that have the obligation of a one thousand, two hundred and forty-five new housing units that are required in the upcoming housing element update, the six cycle. In addition, the City Council directed staff to provide potential revisions to the existing uses allowed within SP twenty-three and limit or admit the more intense uses that have a potential to create a adverse impact based on noise, traffic or aesthetics and other issues to the surrounding residential neighborhood. As requested by the City Council, staff has prepared a draft, and I say very draft, and I want to stress this just because of the comments we're starting to get, preliminary housing inventory list that includes sixteen potential sites, which was in your staff report as Exhibit B, that may be considered to accommodate the city's arena obligation housing units. These sixteen sites may or may not be selected as part of the site inventory list, and this will be done as part of the upcoming housing element update and not as, not part of tonight's process. Included in this list are different density thresholds per acre. Currently, the maximum housing density allowed in the city is sixteen units to the acre, with the exception of the affordable housing overlay zone, which allows up to thirty units to the acre, if there's a affordable housing component as part of that project. Currently, within the list that I provided for you today, there's only one site in there that would, that is within that affordable overlay zone, and that's site number one. The draft preliminary list has been arranged in ascending order, indicating the sites most suitable for potential redevelopment. The three blocks located within SP twenty-three are illustrated at the bottom of the list, which may allow for a mix of density levels, I'm sorry, mix of density levels to support or enhance a healthy mix of housing product types in the future. With the expiration of the moratorium approaching, staff believes that these properties should be analyzed as part of the housing element in the way of housing as a total and not part of the moratorium at this point. At this point, the most pressing issue would be looking at the existing uses within SP twenty-three, if these properties were to be developed, and how can we reduce any intense manufacturing or industrial uses in the future. As such, staff has, is proposing to remove some of these permitted and conditionally permitted uses from the existing list of uses within SP twenty-three to avoid potential adverse impacts to the surrounding residential uses. Steph has reviewed the existing permitted rights, permitted uses by right and conditionally permitted within SP twenty-three for areas one and two, and has presented a draft ordinance that's part of your staff report that eliminates some of those heavier manufacturing and industrial uses, as well as some of the antiquated uses. Additionally, staff will also, as part of the process, review SP twenty-three language to correct some of minor errors, or not, I shouldn't say errors, but just to make the code a little bit more clear on some of the setbacks and also development standards, just to make them more clear. We're not changing any of those, just clarifying those as part of the review. A copy of the proposed revisions for the uses were given to each of the property owners, so there's four property owners within SP twenty-three for them to review. At the time we had written the report, we had not received feedback back from them. However, since then, we have spoken to them and we also have received some letters. As part of the packet that we gave you today for, on the dais, is two letters and one email from three of the property owners wishing that, expressing their concerns with the proposed municipal text amendment. They're saying that the uses, that we're removing the uses and those uses also would reduce the value of their property by removing those uses and not adding any additional uses to the table. I also spoke to Laura and John, who own LAC Motors, they're the ones who owned the smaller lot. I did speak to them on Friday and they also had the same concern and mentioned the same thing. Don't have anything in writing, but I did speak to them about it, and they have the same concerns as the three other property owners. So tonight would conclude phase two of the whole process of the moratorium, which would lead us to phase three, which will be development and implementation. As part of phase three, we would receive any input from you guys, from the council and the Planning Commission tonight and the public, and move forward with amending any text amendments to SP twenty-three and presenting that to the Planning Commission next and then the City Council. So at this time, staff does recommend the City Council, the Planning Commission direct staff to continue with the following process. One, revisit the rezoning of the specific plan twenty-three properties comprehensively as part of the upcoming housing element, six cycle, and then two, based on the information presented tonight and comments provided by the City Council and the Planning Commission, that they direct staff to prepare a draft municipal text amendment ordinance for the June eighteenth, 2020 Planning Commission hearing, and then move to City Council in July. With that, that concludes staff report. I'd like to mention, when we do give comments, so that the Planning Commission, we spoke to them, we would go and, you know, first City Council and then with each individual planning commissioners, they could give their comment, and then just have general comments and open up the mics for them to speak freely also, if that works.
All right, any questions from the council to staff?
Mayor, before we get started with that, sorry, I did want to also explain as part of the staff report, that Councilmember Ebner has a conflict of interest on one of the properties in this SP twenty-three zoning code, so we're going to have to split the discussion tonight into two separate discussions and two separate directions given by the council and the Planning Commission. So the first discussion will be a discussion about the two most westerly properties that Councilmember Ebner can participate in, and then the second discussion will need to be about the easterly, the easternmost property that Councilmember Ebner cannot participate in. Councilmember Ebner is already not in the room, so I would just ask him that in the discussion about the easterly property, that he not participate in that discussion.
Jeff, I have a quick question for you on that?
Yes.
So I understand what you're saying, some of the questions I have or decisions we're going to be talking about deal with the housing element and sites that are, you know, available for the higher density. So for those kinds of general discussions, I'm assuming I can make comments, even if they might apply to that other site as well, as long as I'm not specific about it?
Yes, you can participate in general discussion about the housing element and questions about that, so maybe we could have a discussion about that first, if that works.
Well, I do have some questions about the list that is part of the staff report and like a housing inventory list, and so Marco, remind me, I think we're aiming to get one thousand, two hundred and what, forty-five new units or places for them?
That is correct.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, your table, which I really like, is got various number of units per acre, twelve, sixteen, twenty, et cetera, and I realize that depending on the size of the site, this is going to vary, but can you tell us approximately, you know, given there's maybe some open space and some streets and parking lots or whatever, how many story do the buildings have to be, I mean, you can give a range if you need to, on the various, various numbers of units, and you go all the way from twelve to fifty dwelling units per acre? So can you just tell us a little bit about how many stories those buildings would have to be?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Identify yourself, please.
Yes, this is Henry No, Director of Community Development. With regards to the heights and the densities, at this point in time, it's very difficult for staff to be able to provide that information. We've just provided just generalities as far as very, a general exercise to analyze potential sites in the city and looking at the gross acreage of those sites and just providing the calculation per the density units per those, those categories and those cells. When we go through the actual housing element update, we'll provide further analysis and examples, and we will, at that point in time, discuss the more appropriate, what types of potential developments can occur on those sites and the potential heights and development standards that would be needed to accommodate that certain densities at that point. Tonight, as Mr. Rosipinoza had commented, staff is only looking for direction on the two items at this point, and that. two items at this point, and that is to receive direction from the council as far as reviewing the three SB twenty-three sites in a comprehensive look during the housing element update, which is, we've already awarded that contract and under the the process of updating that. And then the second would be to, if it's the council wishes to look at those uses. But in the future, when we actually go through that housing element update process, we'll be doing outreaches and community meetings, and we'll be providing that information of examples of if a potential mixed use at fifty dwellings per acre, this could potentially be a five-story building that's multi mixed use and such like that. I think that's an appropriate time to have those discussions. At this point, staff didn't look at what those potential impacts would be.
I thanks for that, Henry. I would say that if we're going to be deciding or directing what the general direction, and we're talking about five council members and five planning commissioners, of course, if we're going to be directing what's going to be happening on the Euclid and Acacia properties, so those are the numbers fifteen and sixteen on the list, it'd be good for the council to know and the planning commissioners about what we're talking about. So let's just take that second column, which is sixteen units per acre, and the third column, which is twenty. It looks like we can get our number twelve forty-five if every single one was the same, which obviously wouldn't be, but with about seventeen or so acre dwelling units per acre. With that in mind, and in view of the discussion and direction we have to give for the specific plan through properties I can participate in, those number of units, so probably about fifty-five and fifty-eight or something like that, about what would those projects look like, so we can make an informed decision?
I guess there there needs to be clarification and then further direction, if that's the council wishes in a future meeting. Previously, in our community meetings, we did give and study sessions to the council, we gave what some potential examples could be for different products, just photographic examples. This process, the direction that we're requesting tonight isn't for analysis of actually selecting these sites. We're just requesting that the SB twenty-three sites be analyzed during the housing element update. We're not asking for any of these sites that are located in the staff report to be included in that. We will analyze the entire city as a whole during the upcoming housing element update. We're just asking that the council provide direction to staff to analyzing the SP twenty-three sites during the upcoming housing element updates, and we're not asking for direction of including any of these sites at any of these densities at this time.
Hector, if I remember right, this list came out of the fact that there was a a big group of members of the community that were very passionate about these three particular sites, and if I recall, I think council asked staff to go out and survey the city for where we would potentially look to put this inventory and bring that back for consideration. Is that where we're at right now?
Correct, and that's the direction that we received from council at the last study session was just to give a brief analysis of what potential sites could be included, not that these specific sites are included, but where in the city, citywide.
Right, where were the options?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is just a general, like I said, a general practice exercise that the the planning department had analyzed. We looked at just generally what's surrounding, if it's underutilized, access, and most importantly, the lot sizes and the density at these particular categories could potentially what those dwellings per each site could accommodate.
So so at this point, you know, we're not, you're just looking for some direction at this point.
Correct.
Because I I don't really think this is a real fair process to be able to get the community involvement in this thing, so.
Correct.
It's tell me, you know, where we stand time-wise, because I'd like to be able to have, you know, more input from the community versus, you know, them calling in and and this type of information, but that's just me.
Yeah.
Are you looking for, you're not looking for some direction as far as a vote on on what's going on here, right?
Correct. At this point, we're not looking for any decisions to make made tonight. We are just asking for direction from the city council. This is just to initiate the process to, if the council wishes to analyze the SB twenty-three potential municipal co-text amendment to look at the certain uses and such, we would go through the formal process, as stated in the staff report, going to the planning commission on June eighteenth, I believe, and then following that will be a city council hearing for two readings, if there is a potential municipal co-text amendment with an ordinance associated with that. So we would have additional three public hearings to hear from the public at that point. At this point, staff just provided what the city council had requested, and this is just a quick blush for potential inventory sites to accommodate those arena obligations within the entire city. And then, if the council wishes to go through and finish the moratorium process prior to its expiration in September, and it has to be adopted and in place by October, I believe. So this will finish that process to its completion, if that's the wish of the council, but there'll be three more opportunities for the public to provide.
Okay, is there any further questions from the council? Because I think we need to also include the the planning commission, if they have any further ques any any questions.
Yes, I just had, so thanks, Henry, for clarifying that. So I think what you're saying is that if there are additional sites that are somehow brought to our attention, because I know there were some in our email, and I thought of another one today, but it's like, so you're, you're saying, you can just, some site, it's not really a comprehensive list, you're still looking and open to suggestions, and then you'll evaluate at some future date?
That's correct. When we actually go through the formal housing element update process, and that's going to be about a year and a half process, so we're going to have a number of outreaches to the public and then presentations to the city council and planning commission for an in-depth look at what those sites are once we select those, and then we'll provide that information to the city council, as well as the planning commission at that appropriate time. At this point in time, we didn't do any analysis as far as potential impacts and looking at heights, and that was not part of the exercise. It was strictly looking at potential sites that may be suitable for the potential rezoning to accommodate the city's obligation for arena requirements.
Okay, that sounds good, and I'll just have some comments about it during the comment period for the council, but maybe while the public is speaking, you could just get, just from your experience, general idea of at least two or three of those columns at one extreme or the other in the middle, of about how many stories they would be. I mean, obviously, fifty store fifty units per acre aren't going to fit on one one story, so you've got to have some kind of idea based on your experience, so that's all I would ask, until we speak again at the end of the public comment.
And if I can make a quick comment regarding to your the questions, part of the the reason for the list was the council wasn't sure we could meet that number, so we wanted to be able to show that you can meet that number, and then that diff based on different density levels. So that way, you can say, like, one one property would be at twenty units to the acre, another one might be at thirty units, and then when you combine all those numbers, you get that fourteen twenty-five number, or I'm sorry, twelve twelve forty-five number. So we just wanted to show that, that yes, it is possible, then that way, you can possibly potentially eliminate Site Number fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen if needed, or that you understand that it doesn't need to be a very high-density number for housing there, because you might not need it as part of your arena number.
Thanks, Marco.
Sure.
Thank you. Any any other questions? What about through the the planning commission? You guys have some, anybody who wanted questions?
Unmute them.
I just, John Davis, if you can hear me, so my my understanding of what we're doing tonight is, is we're not going to consider those three properties for residential at this point. They will be put in the mix, and so all we're doing is giving the staff some guidance that the approach that they're taking, which is, let's separate the two, we'll do housing later, but we'll do the SB twenty-three sites now, but only deal with industrial uses, right? Is that the concept?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
It seems like a good plan to me.
All right, anybody else on the planning commission have any questions of Marco or Henry No?
To follow up, this is Tom Molina, to follow up on John's question or statement. So the that change or what were the amendment that we're doing for SB twenty-three is just on the uses?
Correct.
That is correct, but at this point, we're not making any decisions, so in the future, when we come back to the planning commission and the city council, if the council directs staff, at that point, we'll actually have a formal ordinance amending SB twenty-three and the potential uses that the council directs staff to take a look at and reduce, if that's the council's wish.
And that and the 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 moratorium expires in September, you were mentioning?
Correct.
September, October.
September twenty-third is the expiration date.
Yep.
So is that enough time for you to do any type of further studies, or is it just going to be, again, very limited?
Staff did look at the the timing of everything and the milestones, and we still can meet the deadline. By the expiration date, the actual ordinance has to be in place, so that means the first and second reading from the city council has to take place, as well as the thirty-day timeframe before the ordinance is in place after the second reading. And when staff looked at this exercise, we still can meet this timeline, and that was kind of provided to the city councils, was the public, in that tentative public hearing date. So with that, we can still meet it. It's very tight, obviously, with the with unfortunately, the pandemic and everything kind of coming to a halt, but we still were in the process of reviewing the items, and we can still meet all the public hearing requirements if the council wishes to.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
This is Dave Bratt. Quick question. If we were to remove our list, the moratorium, in combination with the changes you've suggested in the text amendment, would would that fore- foreclose us against using that property to meet the housing element?
No, that wouldn't. The SB twenty-three municipal co-text amendment is a separate process than the housing. We are recommending to the council that we actually review and analyze SB twenty-three comprehensively during the housing element update, so we're not taking it off, or we're not including the site at this point, or any of the sixteen sites that staff has included. We're just gonna, we're providing that information that it could be met. If and if I remember, if I heard correctly, Chairman Bratt was asking if we lifted the moratorium at this point. Everything that's currently present in the SB twenty-three development code would pertain to any future proposal. So at this point in time, the permitted uses, such as the warehouse, distribution facility that was provided to staff conceptually, we would take a look at that, we would have to accept it, and it's a permitted use at this point in time. Staff, even though we go through the process, go through the development code process, and even if we required a conditional use permit for that use, it would be a difficult practice to see how we can deny a project if it's a permitted use at this point in time. In general, if the city, if the SB twenty-three sites were just part of the general zoning, so the light industrial zoning for the entire city, we have a little more discretion as far as looking at the surrounding communities for the impacts of certain uses, because you can't plan for the entire city and each scenario of what those impacts can be. But SB twenty-three is specific to these sites, so these three sites, and they're described as permitted uses and conditionally permitted uses, and one of the permitted uses that staff has rec has mentioned in the staff report and is looking to delete, if it's the council's direction, is to delete the industrial warehouse, if that's not something that the city council believes is a compatible use for these three sites. Even though we have an entitlement process, those permitted by right uses are just that fact, it's permitted by right. Even if they're conditionally permitted, typically through that process, you're just putting conditions on a project to help minimize those impacts and looking at trying to minimize an impact of a distribution facility. I don't know how we could condition a project to minimize those impacts of traffic, noise, aesthetic impacts. Those are pretty much all development standards that are already looked at within the specific plan, so that's why we want to go through that exercise of what are the the more impactful uses currently that's permitted or conditionally permitted within SB twenty-three, and then come back to the planning commission and city council during the formal public hearing process to provide what our recommendations are for the council's consideration and decision.
Okay. All right, any further questions from the planning commission?
I, this is Margie Green. Yes, I do think we need to proceed and get more information, follow up on what has been started, and have a formal presentation later with more information. I need more information. So it's time to follow up on it and keep going. End of comment.
Okay, any additional comments?
Yeah, Henry, when we started this, when did we start all this, the moratorium?
Right before you got here. Like six, seven months ago? I don't I don't remember.
Yeah, it it would have been the end of September twenty nineteen.
September, correct.
All right, so we're we're now past six months.
Yes.
Safely past six months. And then, Henry, you said we would be looking at this regardless of whether we lifted it or not, we'd be looking at it when you move forward with the housing element, specifically twenty-three.
So the SB twenty-three sites for the housing element, that would just be pertaining to the actual potential rezoning for housing, but the SB twenty-three moratorium for the municipal co-text amendment is specifically looking at the uses currently.
But.
Used allowed in our development code.
Right.
So at this point, we're looking at going through the moratorium process to see if we were to lift it today, that potential warehouse developer on the packing house site would be allowed to submit an application, formal application for that warehouse distribution, and it would be a permitted use at that point, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but we'd have to process that as a permitted use, and it would, we'd have to be looking at whatever findings to approve or deny, but at this point, it's a permitted use, and it would appear to be difficult.
Right, no, I I understand that, but I think, if I remember right, when we did all this, the the idea was we were going to go through the discussion regarding the uses, the code, and we wanted to freeze the whole thing. And I just, I go back to that meeting where we have owners that are sitting there on their property, waiting for us to get where we need to go, and as far as I can tell, those owners are willing to discuss with the city and work with the city as it relates to potential residential uses in the future. But, you know, I think we're just over six months now tying up those owners, and if there's still work to be done, and we're still going to be discussing it, and it sounds like now we have this list of sixteen sites that looks like we could potentially meet the numbers that we need to meet, I don't know that tying them down in a moratorium does any good, at least for the property owner, understanding that we're probably still going to make changes, and I understand the right to use. But if we're not ready to pull the trigger on something, we're going to be tying them down for at least another four or five months, right?
Some a quick. Some, a quick clarification. Once we end the moratorium, and if there's no amendments made, then we're not delaying that at this point. A potential project could come in at any point after the moratorium is lifted and submit a project based on whatever's permitted or conditionally permitted at this point. The housing element update doesn't freeze any potential proposal at this point. All it is doing is looking at what the potential is for meeting those RENA and housing obligations, and it doesn't freeze or any of the sites in the city. We're just analyzing what sites in the city could accommodate this increase in density.
And Mayor Protem, just to add to that, the basis of the whole thing was to look at all the uses, see if we could reduce some uses that were more intense. We were looking at housing, and that came up as part of the overall discussion, but because of the COVID and not being able to have meetings during Phase Two, we had to kind of remove housing away from that and move it over to the housing element portion of that process because we wouldn't have enough time. I mean, we have, if we're gonna move the project, the moratorium, we have to move it to the June 18th meeting, maybe July 2nd, but past that, we're not gonna make any deadlines. And so we, kind of because of the COVID thing, we have to move forward with it, and because of that, we knew we had to kind of lose one thing because we would have to spend too much time in it. Not too much time, but quality time to be able to develop housing.
No, I understand that, and I hear what you guys are saying, but I also, you know, looking at comments from the community saying that COVID-19, no one anticipated, and, you know, for the same reasons you're making, is the same reasons that it's almost like no harm, no foul at this point. I mean, we're not gonna be able to get the community participation fully the way we would have liked to. We're tying up property owners and their uses. You know, I just, I'm partial to lift in the moratorium and revisiting this when we get to a place where we can do everything we need to do.
When do we start the update of the housing element?
We're trying to finalize the agreement at this point, but I want to make sure that the Council and the public understand that when we look at redesignating the housing element, it's the land use within the general plan. The zoning, which implements the general plan, guides the development standards and what the vision is within the general plan. The housing element is only going to change the land use within the general plan for any potential site for housing. We're not gonna look, relook at the uses of SB 23 during that process. So at the end of the moratorium, whatever's decided at that point in time is the zoning standards for SB 23. So if we lift it today, or in September with nothing, then those permitted uses currently that's in your staff report and in the development code would still be in place, and a, any one of these uses for any potential developer, project applicant, based on what's in the plan, could legally apply for whatever they want.
I fully understand. So the question is, if I recall, and the last information I had, is two of those sites are not interested in leaving whatsoever. They plan at least for the next 10 years to continue on with their business, and I'm concerned that even one of the recommendations is, you know, if we continue their current business with no intensification or change of use, while there's one business that is interested in further expanding his business pending some contracts. So I mean, you know, I think we're at a point where I hear what you're saying, but if only one of the three properties is considering doing anything, I think two of those properties at least should, we should lift the moratorium on them and leave them the way they'd like to be, and we can revisit this later.
So, and we can discuss this further, but to clarify, if the Council wishes to do municipal code text amendment, as part of that would be a legal nonconforming section that the existing businesses would still be able to operate, and we're trying to put provisions in, we've talked to the property owners, and staff is open to allowing for maybe a 10% increase in their existing building square footage to help continue their operations. So the current operations would still be in place. They'd still allow to be do their business as it currently stands today. So what SB 23 would do is protect the city and the community of, and we don't know if they would sell. I mean, someone could come in tomorrow and say, hey, I'm interested in giving them the amount of money they're looking for, and they can leave. And if we, if we weren't to do anything at that point, then SB 23, as it stands today, they would be allowed to submit whatever application it is if the property owner decided to sell. And we have no control over them selling. We can take their word as it is, that they're not gonna sell in 10 years, but they can sell tomorrow. And we have no control over it if we don't fully analyze the specific Plan 23 to reduce some of those impacts if we have concerns over them today.
Thanks.
Mayor, we're starting to get into a discussion about what to do with the sites, and so I want to make sure that we split up the discussion so Councilmember Ebner does not have a conflict of interest. So we first need to have a discussion about the two westerly most sites that Councilmember Ebner can participate in.
All right. Dealing with the two westerly sites, okay?
So that would be the LA Signal.
The LA Signal.
Property, and then the Pump Company that's also connected to LA Mortars.
All right.
So I think what the staff is asking, the input from Council, is does the Council wish to eliminate the uses that are listed on page C7?
On what page?
C7 and C8. You can see there are some uses there that are currently allowed, and staff is proposing to make those disallowed, and they've been crossed out with a strike through line.
Well, I still think the best use of that property is residential. I know that some people probably don't want to hear that on the property, but for the situation we're in, and I would be in favor of eliminating these uses that are underlined here.
Dennis, I didn't quite understand what you said. Could you repeat that again?
I said, I still think that the best use for this property is residential, and I would be in favor of eliminating the uses that are underlined by the staff.
I think as an interim, I'm not sure where it's going eventually. I don't think we are ready to change the zoning to housing right now. I agree with Dennis that in the future, housing is probably the best option, in my opinion, for the two properties we're talking about. However, we're not ready and staff's not ready with a specific plan amendment in time for the approaching deadline for lifting the moratorium, and I just don't see how they could be there, get there that fast in order to change it to housing right now. So I like the changes that staff has proposed as far as eliminating certain things and, you know, encouraging or allowing the others to go on at this time.
So just a quick clarification. Staff isn't looking, we're not making, Council isn't making a decision to eliminate these uses. We're just asking for authorization from, and direction from the Council to actually go through the formal municipal text amendment process. So the Planning Commission hearing in June, as well as the City Council hearing, you'll have an opportunity to look at the actual formal municipal code text amendment. This is kind of just an example of what a first blush from staff, a quick analysis of looking at it and seeing what uses we feel is the most impactful, and giving the Council an idea of what potentially could be coming forward in June and July if the Council wishes.
Well, I understand, I understand that, and that's what our giving direction's all about. What I don't want to have happen is for Council to make a few comments and for staff to go ahead and craft the, you know, whatever it is, and present what essentially becomes a fait accompli to the Planning Commission and the City Council. So I think it's good to have the direction right now so you can kind of weave whatever we say into what it ends up being presented to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and we can take the, we want the comments if Council has it at this point of they agree with certain deletions in the municipal code text amendment that we have provided in the staff report. If you want to provide that direction to staff, we can further analyze and make sure that it's part of our actual formal municipal code text amendment.
I personally like that. The only comment I would make, sort of a general comment, is that there was, under this conditional use permit portion, and I think you might have added that, yeah, because it's in blue on page C8, I think that that time at midnight to 6:00 AM, like not requiring a CUP if somebody's working at these uses until midnight, I think that should be pulled back a little bit, maybe to 10 o'clock. That's kind of typically what we have in other zones. I know we've gone through, whether it's a fitness center or other things, you know, that are operating near neighborhood, 10 o'clock is usually the time that we say, you know, you can't go past that without a CUP.
And we can take that into consideration. Staff included that timeframe because I believe it's consistent with the current noise ordinance, and it gave that timeframe, I believe. And it restricts it kind of more strictly based on noise analysis.
Any further discussion?
Are you going to have the public call in, Emmett, if they want to?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just add that I really have an issue with the moratorium continuing, obviously. I think that without being in a position to really move forward in a meaningful way, we're almost diminishing the use of the property for the existing property owners. And I think we're beyond that time that we told them we would take, hope to take, to be able to accomplish what we were setting out to do to evaluate it, all while we're amidst a significant event in the world tying up these properties for these owners. So, you know, I'm, I agree with the comments of Dennis and John that I suspect those properties may end up being residential at some point, but to continue to hold the property in the moratorium, to me, is a stretch. And, you know, that's where I'm at, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think that back when we talked about the moratorium, we said, you know, there was a time that we would move on, and I do believe that we've passed that time. So I think the moratorium needs to end, and we need to move forward, and that's it. I don't, you know, because I think we discussed it at great length, you know, back when the other, when the prior, before you came, Henry. And so I'm ready to move forward.
Emmett, I'm a little, I'm wondering what you're thinking, because the staff has presented what I consider a tighter specific plan for those two properties, and it allows everybody who's using the property right now to continue on with what they're doing, if I'm not mistaken. And yet, there's a few things, like the warehousing, for example, that is not, is precluded from now on, and I'm trying to wonder, are you open to like, if LA Signal decided to want to go for warehousing with, you know, with driveways emptying out on the Second Street or Yucca right there? Are you open to that kind of a thing?
I'm not, you know, I'm actually not sure that if we're moving forward or not. We said we were not gonna leave the moratorium on much longer than the extension that we gave them already. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying, John, but, you know, how much longer are we gonna hold these properties hostage?
The moratorium would, we would lift it as soon as we have that second meeting, the City Council meeting in July. So it is a month and a half away, but I think we could all hold tight and get a better plan for the existing uses. So, I mean, I think we all want to entertain some residential at some point, possibly. I think we might all want to do that. But I think at this point, we want to make sure that whatever happens there isn't a real intensification of the use, which I believe is permitted right now under the specific plan.
So to provide a little more.
So let's hear from Henry.
So there is one scenario that I want to inform the Council of, and that's if we do lift the moratorium tonight, and for whatever reason, in the future, when we go through the housing element update, you do not include these sites as part of the housing element update. The existing uses at that point within the SB 23 would be the authority, and what John was saying, and what I'm hearing from Mayor Bedar, is we'd want to look at that, but at that point, we're looking at a use that's a permitted by right use. And Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, our city attorney, but when a city analyzes a permitted by right use, and we're actually looking at denying a project, we have to have specific extraordinary circumstances that the city needs to find to deny a project that is a permitted by right use. To me, in my professional opinion, the specific Plan 23 makes it a lot more difficult on the city's end, potentially because it's specifically looking already at the three sites and should be looking at the surrounding community. So if the Council and the public have a lot of concerns over the warehouse and other manufacturing uses, this is the point in time that we want to make sure that we make those amendments. Like I mentioned previously, we're not, we're not affecting the existing businesses at all. They are going from the beginning of the moratorium process till now, they're operating as is. After the moratorium, everything, they will operate as is, and we're trying to provide an actual opportunity for them to increase that potentially, if that's the City Council's wishes, to expand some of those uses at this point in time, and allowing for those opportunities where they may not be allowed to currently because they may not be meeting today's standards. So we'll take a look at that and see if that's an option that the Council wants to entertain, and we can potentially have, let them, allow them with a certain review to expand some of those processes. And we're looking at trying to streamline those processes, and if they meet certain criteria, maybe we can allow that to be a straight, go straight to Plan Check if it meets certain standards. Instead of going through the DPRB and the Council long, lengthy process, maybe we can streamline this process to be a better partnership between the city and the private side.
I think my rub with it, Henry, is we brought this on ourselves, onto those property owners. This was initiated, and we've gone past that time for those owners. So I hear everything you're saying. I don't necessarily disagree with some of your arguments in favor of keeping it, but I think that we went out, we initiated this, we tied up the properties. You know, the, at least two of those owners, as far as I'm aware, have said they do not plan to do anything other than continue their businesses for their foreseeable future, at least a decade, and they wish to continue to work with the city. So, I mean, I'm scratching my head, and if there's one property that needs to be dealt with, then I guess we can deal with that as best we can. As far as the uses go, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, these property owners have worked with the city in good faith, and I have to believe they'll continue to because they've done that now. And to tie, continue to tie up the properties, I think in the situation and the crisis that we're in, I don't think is fair to the owners of those properties. So I'm not saying, I'm not in tune with what you're describing and where you want to go, but what I am saying is, you know, that community came out, and all this noise got made over something that we initiated. And now, there's people writing about Via Verdi and everything else because we raised awareness to the RENA numbers and the actual site considerations that I think the community otherwise was not aware of. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors that play into this. It's not as clean-cut as just these three properties. I think there's a lot more public participation and comment that needs to be done, and, you know, I think we need to be fair to the businesses in this community, and frankly, that community, because that community also that lives surrounding that area has had a lot of things to say about it. A lot of people swung the bat for all of those businesses there. So they've been great neighbors for many years. So, you know, I say let bygones be bygones, and, you know, we continue to work with what we need to be doing here, but I don't know. That's my thought.
Brian, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, just, Brian, just a question for you. So, say we lifted the moratorium, would you be opposed to still proceeding with the specific plan changes that staff is entertaining? And then, as you say, if those property owners aren't going to, you know, entertain any other uses, they would, they'd be fine?
Is that possible, Henry? Henry, if I could, if I could take that, yes, it's possible, because it's the same as any other zoning amendment.
Yeah, I may not be...
Was his...
Sorry, go ahead, Margie.
Was his original, I'm sorry, this is Margie. Is the original moratorium on until September 6th or October 6th?
The deadline, September 23rd.
September 23rd?
And, and the expiration. And I want to make sure that the council and the public are aware that we're not requesting an extension. So, if I remember correctly, in part of this entire process, it was the council's wish and it was staff's best effort to try and meet an expedited schedule. So, I believe there was a date of June or July. Let's come back, revisit, let's see, and if we haven't made progress, then let's just go ahead and potentially lift it.
And I do believe that at least two members of the council pretty much said at six months we were done.
Correct.
We were trying to, trying to speed it up, trying to get it done before, but with this COVID thing, I understand that we may have to go to the end of the moratorium...
Correct.
...that we had originally come up with.
Yeah. And that's correct. It's not that we were potential, we were intentionally delaying this process. Obviously, it pretty much halted public outreach and any of those steps. City was still analyzing the properties and such. We're not requesting an extension, and we will, if the council wishes, we will move forward and we will hit those deadlines.
Correct.
But that's what we're requesting at this point.
So, to John's question, I'm not, if we would lift the moratorium, I'm okay with moving forward with the text amendment. Now, what do you think, Mayor?
Just to make one, just, well, that's, that's, that's a completely fine thing to do. That would allow someone to apply for a warehouse use in between the time the moratorium is listed and, sorry, in between the time the moratorium is lifted and the time that the new zoning amendment takes effect. And, but the other thing I would want to clarify is that we cannot lift the moratorium tonight. We can get council direction to bring back at the next meeting, a resolution to lift the moratorium, and then it'll take effect immediately at the next meeting.
And just to clarify, I mean, anything is possible, as, as Jeff mentioned. I think it would be counterproductive if we went through that exercise, because at this point, there's a definite end point, which is September 23rd. If we lift the moratorium and allow, and all the moratorium is doing is freezing it at this point, it's not freezing current operations, it's freezing the potential for someone to apply. So, in the amount of time between today, end of May, and, end of September, I don't think we're doing a disservice to those property owners, because they're not going to sell it, and there's not going to be an applicant that comes forward by the time the deadline hits. It takes time to, unless they have something working on the side that we're not aware of, that someone could actually come in the day after we lift the moratorium, it takes time to put applications together and provide conceptual plans and such. So, if we lift the moratorium and continue an analysis of the specific plan 23 amendment, I think we're actually just extending this timeframe of unknowns, and it's just elongating this process unnecessarily.
So, you think we either lift the moratorium and be done with it, or we go to the finish line?
Deadline, correct.
If, if I could give you some dates, just to kind of maybe help you with this, too. So, we were requesting that we go to Planning Commission on June 18th. So, that, we're thinking one meeting at Planning Commission, they give your recommendations to city council. We would go to the city council on July 14th. If we can do it in one meeting, then we would have the second reading of the ordinance on July 28th. And then, we let it sit for 30 days for the 30-day reading, and then the moratorium would end on August 28th. So, we would be a month ahead of the expiration date of September. But by, but July 14th, if you go ahead and approve it, the property owners know what uses are deleted or added at that time, so they know where they stand. And any new property owners, if there's any, understand what can be done with those properties by July 14th.
Marco, do you, do you like the stay-at-home order?
Do I like the stay-at...
Stay-at-home order.
I have no comment.
Well, I say that because the moratorium is the stay-at-home order for these property owners. They've been told to stay at home, they're stuck, they can do nothing, and we are imposing this. I mean, we continue to impose it. So, I mean, I hear the dates, I hear the timeline, but in light of Henry's comments, I'm back to preferring to lift the moratorium and be done with this until we get to the point where we can really have a comprehensive discussion about it, which it sounds like we're going to have anyways. So, I mean, I, I don't think we're not going to achieve what we're trying to do, understanding the text amendment that would not occur. But I don't think there's any pressure at this point. This was initiated by us, the owners, for the most part, yes?
It was initiated because of a preliminary project that came forward.
Right, on one property, right?
Yeah.
On the one that John can't talk about. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that. But so, but I mean, at least for two of the three, there's no issue here, you know, so...
But, but Ryan, what, so, I, I don't, I don't have any inside information, but what, what are they being prevented from doing right now while the moratorium is on for the next two months as, or, I guess it would be technically three months, but we, we have a decision in two months about what the council is going to specify for the...
So, the only item that the city would be delaying is either a potential new development that the current property owners would be requesting in this two-and-a-half-month period, or selling it to a new person and them sell, or proposing a new development. So, that's the only thing that we're preventing at this point, is a potential new proposal on any of these three sites.
All right, we're like the IRS, we're freezing his assets of selling. Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what it is, is that's what we're doing. I just, I don't agree with it.
Just for clarification for my purposes, since I was not on the council for most of this discussion, which makes this really difficult on me. So, with the moratorium in place, if one of those property owners, those two Westerly property owners wanted to expand, you know, 10% of their square footage to expand their capacity as it is right now, are they able to do that with the moratorium in place?
With the moratorium in place, no, because we're not allowing for any expansion in this two-month period. And I'd have to defer to staff as far as if there's a capability of them currently as the SB 23's standards are in place, if they would be able to expand. I don't have the, the history of each site, but we would analyze basically what's being proposed and what the existing square footage and standards are, and seeing if it meets today's standards. And I'm not aware of if they would be allowed at this point in time to expand. But we're, we were open when we met with the property owners of analyzing and seeing if there is an opportunity to kind of further analyze and maybe potentially include in the moratorium or the amendment process, a potential provision that would allow them to expand by 10% of existing square footage. That was something that we did discuss.
Henry, we're not making any decisions tonight, but what is it specific you would like out of the city council?
It's either to move forward with the moratorium process and go forward with a specific plan amendment, municipal text amendment.
Well...
And analyze the SB 23 sites in total with the upcoming housing element update.
All right, well, I'm, I'm not 100% sure that I really understand the entire thing, but I do know that back several months ago, I made it very clear that I was not in favor of continuing a moratorium, any, where he passed where we were at. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, we've already had this moratorium for how many months? Eight. Eight. And back months ago, we said we weren't going to go past six months or something like that. So, I don't, I don't know what resolution is the best resolution to do it, but, you know, I think we've, we've had a moratorium for a long time, and I just think we need to move forward.
Well, I'd make a motion then that we direct staff...
Council, before we make any motion, we need to have public comment on the two Westerly sites.
That's what I was about to, point of order to the mayor, that's what I was going to say.
Okay, do, do we have any public, we have three. Okay, let's start off with number one.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Yes, I'm a concerned citizen that lives on Second Street. There's been no citizens praising high-density housing. So, why would you or the city planning division advocate for housing projects in our town unless there's corruption involved?
I, I didn't quite understand, I'm sorry.
Maybe that's the end of his comment.
High-density housing, there's no citizen asking for high-density, high-density housing to be in any of those lots or any lots in the city. And so, I understand there's some state mandate that's asking to put 1,245 houses in, or not houses, living units in this city. What if we don't, what if we, what happens if we say no? Why aren't we discussing that, rather than saying, hey, we're going to say yes to this and allow for high-density housing or housing projects, what it used to be called in seven years?
Henry, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, so, the state of California, each community has to meet its housing element rena obligations. We're in the sixth cycle, as we've mentioned. Progressively through time, in my career as well as just an understanding, it's been progressively getting more difficult for local municipalities, and the state is coming down with specific legislation to try and increase the housing production. If the city decides not to get a housing element update approved through Housing and Community Development, HCD, the state legislation, we could be...
Last meeting, if you read the notes in the previous, previous meeting before, you guys specifically said, this is our time as citizens, this meeting right now, that we'd be able to be in front of the city council and advocate for what we want as citizens. And, and now, it's been pushed slickly to, oh, we're not taking, trying to make any decisions on anything or advocate for or against something, where the citizens are mad. We just want housing projects in our city.
So, just to provide information to the council, if the, if the city wishes to not get its housing element approved, then we are potentially up for litigation from the state, the attorney generals. We would lose funding, housing funding, and a number of other potential litigation and fines mandated by the state. And we, there are cities that haven't gotten their housing element update approved, but they've lost funding, or they've potentially had that litigation from the state as part of it. Going forward, it's been, another thing that we would be subject to is, right now, if we have a certified housing element, our review time was extended from, previously it used to be five, every five years, now it's every eight years, as long as you get it approved. If you don't get it approved, it goes down to four years. So, we would be going through this process pretty much every four years of potentially having to abide by our rena obligations. And if we don't have it adopted, those units could be rolled over from previous cycle to the next cycle. So, in addition to the 1,245, we would be subject to additional, so it would be like 1,245 plus whatever they feel is appropriate at the end of the, the next cycle.
So, so at this point, we need, you know, arena, our rena number is 1,245.
Correct.
Okay, and it's not a really an option, you know, how we want to handle it, right? Do I understand it?
And, that's correct.
He said potential lawsuits...
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, what?
Potentially not then.
Wait, go ahead, I repeat what you said.
You said potential litigation. There, that would mean if there's potential litigation, there's also potentially no litigation, no recourse. Why don't we explore that, rather than high-density housing, which your citizens do not want?
So, the state has been taking more aggressive actions for cities that don't accommodate their housing obligations. I mean, that's, that's a policy decision up to the city council at that point, but and maybe Jeff can chime in.
It's not an option. We have to do the 1,240, at least the 1,245, and they could actually expand that more if they so do.
In the future, after the eight-year cycle. And I want to make sure that the public is aware that it doesn't mean that 1,245 is coming to the city, we just have to provide the opportunity to allow for the development. So, we would have to zone and change the, the land use designations of these certain properties and allow for the opportunity to be built at the, to meet these unit numbers.
And it's every eight, eight years.
Every eight-year cycle, so 1,245 units in an eight-year cycle. At this point, we're required by our rena obligations.
Okay, sir, do you, do you understand what Henry's saying?
Thank you for at, at least trying to address the situation. I appreciate that the council heard that your citizens don't want high-density housing.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, the next call? At least, we have four more calls. Okay, can we put the next one on?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
I'd like to first say good evening, council. And my name is John Ciari, I'm one of the owners of the SB 23. I'm the property, I think you're referring to it as one, one property, but it's adjacent General Pump. And first of all, I'd like to say good evening, and thank you for this time. But this also, the, the fact that I've been on hold for 45 minutes, I want you to know how important it is that my property, how, how important this is to me. But it does seem that the planning commission or the, the planning department seems to attack my property every four years or so. About four, I believe it was four years ago that I had to go before you and again defend, defend my, my property from having it, as one of the council members said it so eloquently, held for, held hostage. Now, for our property to be reduced, have the, the capability reduced, as the planning commission has, or the planning department has, has deemed necessary, I, I, I take it very personally. I bought this property knowing what the capabilities are. I am a Persian Gulf vet, and I saved every penny. I worked two jobs to save the money to finally buy a, a piece of commercial property. This property is my, my retirement, and now it's being reduced to whatever the planning department decides it to be. That's very unfair. I would like to see if, if this property, if this, if this area is to be put up for residential, then why don't we wait until we have somebody who's interested and then allow us to make those decisions at that, at that time? The planning department has also decided to reduce the times that we can... The planning department has also decided to reduce the times that we can be on our property. That, that's, 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 again, I'm a vet and I feel like my constitutional rights are being completely swept or removed from me. The things that I deemed so, as a, as a business owner, not just that, but a property owner, I felt that I would, I would be able to have a little bit more liberty, but in fact, it's just the opposite, I've paid big money, invested my, my, my future in the city of San Dimas and the planning department has, is, has decided to, that, that they're, they're going to do something different with it. And it's completely unfair, completely for me as, as an American, as a United States veteran, as, as a, as a business owner of San Dimas, I, I just feel like I'm being slapped in the face. Why don't we wait, it, it makes absolutely no sense to, to reduce our properties to, 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 to allow it to be office space and, and nothing else. That, that makes no sense to me. I thank you for this time, council. I do thank you again, this is John Ciari from LAC Motive. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Henry, do you have something you want to address that?
With respect to limiting this time on this property, staff isn't suggesting any, any limitations on their current business. So, they could operate forever, if they wish to, on these sites currently. It's what would be precluded or limiting whatever potential new sites or new developments would be in the future if that does come to fruition.
And if I can add to that, he was also, because I spoke to him on Friday, he was also kind of addressing the hours of operation because we're adding that. And I explained to John that that was for future uses of new businesses coming in, so limiting those hours. And then he did make the comment about, that we've previously done this before, just want to mention, that was when City Ventures came in, because this is area one, those two properties there, side by side. At that time, it was thought during the initiation process to take both of those properties because we figured the, the residential property would probably be developed and the next one would be, that one would be next to be developed, so we thought, let's take them both. During the initiation period, both property owners asked to be taken off, so we did take them off at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for calling. Did, did the staff answer your questions?
The caller dropped.
He's gone? Okay. Okay, you have another call? Okay.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, good evening, I'm going to, this is Isabel Edmond, I live on Fourth Street in the downtown district, just north of the SP twenty-three properties. I just wanted to say that personally, as a resident who lives closely inside, I actually support staff's recommendations for the tax amendments that they're proposing. Personally, my opinion, I agree with staff's assessment that we don't want to see a warehouse or another heavy industrial use to come in by rights, that's too negatively impacting the community. I also hear the property owners, you know, of the SP twenty-three sites, that are concerned about having some use moved, but my understanding is that there are also some uses being added. So, hopefully, in collaboration with the current owners can come up with, you know, mutually agreed compromise that, you know, could lead to allow the property owners to , you know, their property values. So I hear what Mayor Bader and Councilmember Vienna, because there's not any more moratoriums now, a couple more months, a few months, is that more moratoriums than days or eight months already, you know, to end it now, in ways like which would be in vain with its no outcome? My hope is that, you know, if, if it just goes on for, you know, four months, you know, staff and citizens can work together to have a concrete beneficial outcome that will, you know, be good for the, and the, the surrounding community. If you end the more moratorium today or, you know, the next month, my worry is that, you know, whatever the industrial use will just come right in and, I guess if you're okay with that, go ahead and end the moratorium, but my hope is that you go along with the construction to what it just, you know.
Thank, thank, thank you, I'm not sure that any of us understood what she's saying.
Mayor, it sounds like it was, I mean, we don't know for sure, but it sounds like it was probably a cell phone reception issue, so for the caller's benefit, it was difficult to hear what her comments were here in the chambers. So, maybe the public should be reminded or suggested that they use landlines when they call in, if they want to ensure that they're heard, but it did seem to be a cell phone reception issue on the caller's end.
Do we have another call? Okay, if a caller calls in, please, please use a regular landline.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Brad Johnson, resident on Second Street. Thank you all for taking our calls tonight. I know it's a difficult time to hold public hearings, so we do appreciate you allowing the public to call in on this item. I, I like the way I see this item going. I think that that chart showing the sixteen sites throughout the city gives, gives the public a really good perspective that those numbers, as large as they are, that are being asked for the city of San Dimas to provide, can be provided in the city, at least in the zoning aspect, on many sites throughout the city. I think the, the fear factor that the neighbors have on First Street and Second Street and the surrounding streets are that we were going to get multifamily, large buildings looming over our backyards and front yards. So I, I think this is heading a good direction, to really hit the pause button and let's look at the whole city. I, I would argue the higher-density projects need to be closer to the gold line platform. There's a, a theory in the transit-oriented world of designing that really a, a half-mile is the most a person will walk to get to those platforms. And really, two of these three sites are outside of that half-mile radius, so probably not the best site for higher density. Some low-density that matches the neighborhood, I think that's a good conversation to have down the road. So, again, I'm glad to hear it going the way it's going. I, I do agree with the planning staff that getting rid of the warehouse uses and some of the more heavy industrial uses is a good idea. I don't think these owners are going anywhere either, so probably no harm, no foul. If a warehouse application came in thirty days from now, the city could absolutely put another moratorium on that parcel. So, again, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I do appreciate you taking the time to consider this tonight, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. John, any, any further? Okay, please.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jan Bartolo again. I guess I have nothing better to do this evening but hang with you guys. But anyways, I'm calling in again because I heard two dates during your discussion. I heard June eighteenth for the planning commission and I heard July fourteenth to come back to the city council. What I would like to know is, at what point and how and when do we get the public involved other than just the social media blurt, maybe the day or two in advance of one of these meetings? And not just notification to residents or business owners, say within a thousand foot of the property on Second Street that currently is being discussed in regards to this moratorium. But I think it would be most helpful to members of the public, if, if Councilman Weber, newly on the committee, is, is having difficulty comprehending the full scope and magnitude of this entire discussion, you can imagine the confusion potentially that is occurring with members of the general public who don't necessarily have the expertise in city government, zone text amendments, and all what is being discussed. So it would be really nice to know that the city council of San Dimas would reach out, hold a general public hearing informational, maybe in more generic terms, where the community could understand the overall impact. And even if in fact there's sixteen potential sites being reviewed and discussed in general terms, at least they can have an idea, even if it's getting ahead of ourselves, a little bit about the possibility of what are we talking about, height, density, even though it's technically unknown right now. But I think there's a due diligence here to more effectively inform and involve the community, and again, something more than just a thousand-foot notices to the immediate property on Second Street at this point. It would be much appreciated. I think there's a lot of people that are watching, commenting, and very interested in the impact and the effect of this, and, and I think we need to be better informed.
Thank, 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 thank you, Jan. Appreciate it.
To provide some information with regards to the, this recent caller's concerns, when the city does go forward with the housing element update process, there are going to be a number of meetings, community meetings, outreaches. We are requesting from the consultant that was awarded the bid to provide as many options from a virtual standpoint as well, to see what options do the city have to reach the community as a whole virtually versus our traditional workshops in person due to the COVID nineteen. So we're asking for the developer to provide as many options as possible to receive public input, and it may or may not be our typical community workshops if, if we're not able to, but we're asking for a number of opportunities to be utilized to reach the public and provide their input on an extended period of time, not just ten days prior, but this is going to be a year and a half long process.
Okay, and I do appreciate that, and I do understand the significance of obviously the COVID pandemic and the limitations that that does impact as far as having a community gathering on a large public meeting place. And so whatever creative resources, as you say, that are being looked at and explored to get this general information out, would be most appreciated because it is, amidst everything else, I think the general public is going through with our current situation in the world and within the, you know, our own country, I think this also creates some cause for concern and discernment within members of the community as well.
Thank, thank, thank you, Jan, I, I think we understand, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very much anymore? We got one more call.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Please, Mayor Bader, members of the, this is Isabel Edmond again, I call for your, excuse me this time. Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have a landline, only a cell phone, so I still have to do. I just wanted to say that as a member of the community who lives just near these properties, that I actually support staff's recommendations, that tax amendments. Personally, I don't want to see warehouse or heavy industrial come to any of those properties that's ever negatively impacted the social community. As, I heard a previous caller, who's one of the property owners, and I, I feel for them, I, I hear that he's concerned about, you know, his property being tied up, but my hope is that, you know, in the context of the staff's initiative to remove these spaces, propose some uses as well. So, my hope is that be a compromise that benefits, you know, the property owners, the city, you know, and the rest of the neighbors. Also, I wanted to, you know, acknowledge Councilmember Vienna and Mayor Bader, you know, you said from the beginning that even moratoriums do not long, and now we're eight months into this, but my hope is that you do choose to continue the moratorium for just a few more months, because my concern is that if you end it now after eight months with no outcome, then it will just have been a vain. My hope is that, you know, in just two more months, as the planning department is proposing, there will be a and beneficial outcome that will be agreeable to all parties. So, you know, my support is with continuing the moratorium and continuing with staff's amendments. I think that if you choose to eliminate the moratorium now, you're sending a message to the community that you're okay with having a warehouse and industrial uses in residential neighborhoods. Did you hear me that time?
Thank you, Isabel, I'm not sure that, you know, it was picked it up pretty well, but I'm not sure exactly what, what, what she said, but maybe you could call in and talk to Brad McKitty tomorrow. If you don't mind.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, you, you were in and out, and I'm just not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you very much for calling in. I don't know, counsel, did you really understand what she was saying? I, I, I got here and got there.
I understood bits and pieces, what I did hear is that she prefers staff's recommendation to move forward with the conclusion of the moratorium.
She was sympathetic to the property owners.
But she feels that we're doing the best effort.
John, you have somebody else? Okay.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Yes, thank you, everyone, council, planning commission and, and the staff for focusing on these issues. My name is Ian Stewart, I'm one of the property owners for one five-five North Euclid, where LA Signal operates out of, and I had a couple of comments. A request going forward that, that the discussions about housing density and, and property use under the, the state requirements be separated from the Plan Twenty-three discussions, because it really confused the issue for all involved. Now that, now that we're not, the, the intent for any of these four properties is, is not to become residential within the near future, that really shouldn't, they shouldn't be considered under the, under these discussions. And at some point, if they do get sold and the, the interest is to change their zoning, then that's, that's something that can be addressed at the time, and that zoning would be subject to whatever requirements are in place at that point. So it's really that, that whole discussion about residential on these properties is really moot, because none of them are going to be changing in the near future. Second is, any changes or reductions to the uses of these properties? Can you guys hear me okay? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It is, whether it be making them legal non-conforming or, or reducing their uses, I want everybody to understand that we are currently using these properties for these activities. We do warehousing, we do machining, we do fabrication at these facilities, and we're quiet, we are, we are good to our neighbors, and the moratorium doesn't allow us to, if we needed to expand our, our operations, we would still have to meet noise requirements and all the other ordinances that, that, that maintain the peace in the community. And so, adding those requirements to the zoning classification is, is redundant, as far as I can tell. And the, the comment about allowing a ten percent increase or expansion in the properties, I, that's the first I've heard of it, is this evening, so I, I'd like to know more about that. And the moratorium was originally placed as a result of the, or under the guise of the half-mile radius around the, the planned gold line station, and the focus is now shifted to use classification for the properties. So I'm confused about what the focus of this whole effort is in the first place. So I, I think if you're time and, and I'll let you respond.
Thank you. Henry, do you have some response there?
Sure. As far as the separation of the housing from SP 23 moratorium, that's what we are requesting. So we're requesting that in the future during the housing element update process, we will analyze SP 23 sites including the entire entirety of the city for potential housing increases to meet our renewal obligations. As far as the legal nonconforming uses, we aren't proposing any types of limitations on the current uses. Or will we propose any amendments that would affect their current operations as it is? Any types of uses that, or any amendments to the specific Plan 23 would pertain to new businesses or, yeah, basically new businesses, or if they decide to redevelop their property, that SP 23, the new regulations and such would pertain to those new businesses. The 10% increase was just a discussion topic with the property owners, and actually we brought it up with Ian, this is a few months ago, so he might have forgot, but this is an in-person meeting with the property owners that staff had met with each individual property to understand what their concerns are and get their input as far as the whole SP 23 moratorium process and potential amendments and such. It isn't included in this, but it doesn't mean that we're not recommending it. We could analyze that as a potential for the future when we bring back the moratorium, if that's the council's direction in June and July, and it'll be part of the formal ordinance process, if that's direction that the council wants to go, wants the staff to go.
Right, thank you. Do we have anybody else, John? Showing none. Staff is saying there's no more. Okay, when I'm looking at the action, what action are we supposedly doing here? Because it says revisit the zoning, it doesn't show an actual action.
No, what staff is recommending the council provide is direction, and that's to analyze the SP 23 as part of the housing element update, which is going to be a year and a half in the making. And the second request is to provide direction, if the city council wishes to continue with the moratorium process, and look at potential municipal code text amendments such as the ones that you have in your staff report, is to give direction to staff to go through that formal process and actually go through the public hearing process and analyze it further and provide an actual formal municipal code text amendment for the review and approval of the city council and planning commission in June and July at those points.
I agree with both the staff's recommendations. I had a question about the warehousing and wholesaling part. You know, you had struck that in the, again, just the idea, let's call it the idea, ideas, changes to the specific plan. And that doesn't prevent like, or does it prevent wholesale or warehousing of inventory that is created by a business that's operating on the site for some, you know, for another approved use?
So the current uses, as they operate today, as the warehousing and whatever operations they have, will continue as far as they don't sell it to a new user. If we did eliminate the proposed or the allowed warehousing, that is on page, page seven, exhibit C of the staff report, under 18538.110, Planning Area One, the Business Park District, item number 12, it's on the right column. We have struck out wholesaling and warehousing, and it talks about wholesaling, warehousing, storage, and distribution agencies. And this is underneath, if you look at subsection A, that's the permitted use, these are the permitted uses. And the wholesaling warehouse is within the permitted uses. If you go to the next page, page eight, under subsection B, those are uses subject to conditional use permits. Items that we struck out were like manufacturing plants, which manufacture processed chemicals. So we're allowing it potentially, conditionally, for manufacturing plants for processed chemicals, and that therefore, that's why we're trying to eliminate some of these permitted as well as conditionally permitted uses. The current operations, these don't apply to the current operations. They can operate as is today and into the future as long as they choose to stay at these sites.
Henry, you said the process takes a year and a half?
For the housing element update. So we have to have it adopted by HCD by next October. So it's going to go through community meetings, public hearings, will be before the city council planning commission a number of times as we go through this process.
So what happens when the process is progressing and the moratorium ends?
So those are two separate processes.
Two separate processes.
So the moratorium will end if we continue this September, end of September, September 23rd. Next September 2021 is the deadline to get it approved, certified by city council and approved through HCD, the state. So that's the year and a half process for the housing element update.
Thank you.
For lifting the moratorium, is there, is that just a simple vote, or is there a public hearing required, or what's the process for that?
If you wanted to lift the moratorium, you'd direct staff to bring back a resolution at the next meeting to lift the moratorium. And then as soon as that was adopted, it would take effect immediately. No formal public hearing is required, but we would of course have public comment.
So and then could we direct staff to do that and also proceed with the potential text amendment to the SP, SP 23 that they were talking about, go to planning commission, et cetera?
Yes, you can do that, but that is going to open up a window of time where a warehouse could go into one of the sites.
I understand. Well, yeah, okay.
So Henry, my question is if a motion was made basically to direct staff to bring back a resolution to lift the moratorium at the next meeting and continue to analyze SP 23 as it relates to land use and the housing element, that basically would then, you would continue some of the work, understanding the text amendment would not occur, but it would also continue the work that we've done here with some of this as it relates to how it plays into the housing element update?
So with regards to lifting the moratorium, I mean, as we go through a process, and when I say extending that process, I don't know what further analysis on top of what we're already doing, if the council wishes to end the moratorium and go through an amendment process for SP 23. The way I'm hearing, it would actually lengthen that process and open up that opportunity, as our city attorney had mentioned, for an opportunity for someone to come in. We can look at it, obviously, during the housing element, but at that point in time, it's whatever standards are in place are in place.
Right. To Ian's point, though, is that if someone came in with a zone change, and like, let's say they wanted to make it residential, at that point, council would go through the regular process then with that.
And that's what my understanding, and from what I've been advised, is City Ventures at the LA Signal property, they went through that process, and for whatever reason, ultimately, it was denied at that point. So, I mean, you'd be going through that same process pretty much at that point in time that we already went through four years ago, or five.
Right.
So Henry, how, why would it extend the process for this text amendment that we have in our packet? And, you know, the idea is there. Why would lifting the moratorium extend the process of going to planning commission in four weeks, I think it is, and city council in four more weeks? I don't understand why both things can't happen.
I guess, once we end the moratorium, there's no definite deadline. So if we lift the moratorium to provide additional time, is what I'm hearing, for staff to analyze the SP 23 uses further, I don't feel that additional time is needed from staff's perspective. We have sufficient time from now till August when we're trying to get to that deadline, even a month before the expiration. We have sufficient time to fully analyze and try and reduce the uses. If that's the wishes of the council, I think that's the most expeditious process to further analyze. I don't know how we would further analyze. We've already reached out to the public, we've held community meetings. I don't know what, in addition, the council would want staff to perform to analyze the SP 23 uses that we haven't already done.
So am I understanding that, Henry, am I understanding that the staff's recommendation would be not to extend the moratorium?
Extend it past September 23rd. So our recommendation is to...
I'm talking about right now.
He's saying there's no reason, in his opinion, there's staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, but staff's already evaluated every possible use, so they're basically saying if we're not going to proceed with the text amendment, then there's really no need to continue the moratorium. I mean, is that it in a nutshell?
That's correct. Why would, there's no other analysis needed from staff if the council wants to lift the moratorium. So it's basically what's in place, or we continue the moratorium till the end at SP, at September 23rd, and we come forward.
But what would, what would be the purpose of extending it and going ahead and extending it till September?
To finish going through the public hearing process. So tonight, it's just a recommendation from the council to staff to fully analyze and bring forward a potential municipal text amendment to amend what our recommendations are for these existing uses.
But also, Henry, the purpose of letting the moratorium continue until the end of September is because if the moratorium is lifted, someone can construct a warehouse, a machinery shop, cold or an ice storage plant, any of those, because those are permitted uses, the day after the moratorium is lifted. And it's very unlikely the city will be able to deny those uses because they're permitted.
But I don't understand that. So, Henry, your staff has analyzed and given some ideas that you said you were going to bring to the planning commission in four weeks. Did I misunderstand that?
So what Mayor Protem Vienna asked is if we ended the moratorium but continued the SP 23 amendment potential separate from a moratorium process, to me, that could only, I don't understand why we would end the moratorium and still continue that process if we can end it with recommendations in the next two and a half months.
Oh, I, listen, Henry, I agree with you about that. I think extending, keeping the moratorium for two months is not a problem. However, if the majority wants to end the moratorium, then what are we left with? We're left with SP 23 as it stands now, which allows bottling plants and, you know, play fired stuff, and all sorts of, all sorts of things that we might not want. So go ahead and continue, when I say continue, I don't mean continue analyzing, and I don't mean continual analyzing why to end the moratorium. I'm saying the moratorium ends next meeting with this resolution. And then staff continues on their path that they were already going to do by presenting this to the planning commission at the next, at two weeks, two meetings from now, and then to the city council, with public hearings and the whole nine yards, and so that by, by the end of July, we have a better SP 23 for these two pieces of properties that wouldn't allow warehousing or bottling plants or, you know, factories or other things like that. So I don't see why there's a difference in staff's work effort or ability to bring that forward.
I understand now what the...
Yeah, that makes, and that's kind of what I thought John was getting at, because the only other option was going to be to lift the moratorium and table this entire SP 23 effort with the text amendment. But I agree with John and some of the other council members that there may be some uses that I do think need to be reevaluated. So I think if, you know, the consensus is we can agree to lift the moratorium and direct staff to do that at the next council meeting and continue forward with the text amendment as described, in light of all the work that's been done and some of the, what I'm hearing from council about some of these uses, I think it kind of gets us maybe to where we want to be.
I fully understand now. So the council wishes is just to eliminate the moratorium. So the only caveat basically is what Jeff had mentioned, our city attorney, as far as...
Yeah, got it.
Tomorrow, someone could apply, which is highly unlikely. So if the council wishes, we, that could be done, and we can come forward with the timeline that we provided in the future with the potential SP 23 amendments.
I think that's the best we're going to get right now. So while I thought that moratorium should be extended for those two months, Ryan, I'm on board, if you're on board, with having them bring that to the planning commission and city council as planned.
It's not very often, but yes, I'm on board.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess then I'll make a motion that we direct staff to go ahead and come back to our next council meeting with a resolution lifting the moratorium on SP 23 and continue to work on the municipal code text amendment as outlined in the staff report and work through that process.
And I just ask that that motion apply only to the Westerly two sites so that John can vote, and then we'll have to do another motion for the Eastern site.
Absolutely. Specifically, the two sites to the immediate west of the other side of Benita Cataract. That's the amendment.
I will second Ryan's motion with just a question, Ryan. Does that include keeping to the schedule that they had outlined previously?
Hold on, Marco's thinking.
Marco's checking, and his boss is saying yes.
Just about. We might end up at the September date versus the August date.
You take your time. I'm not hard committee.
Yeah, sure.
August, September.
You got as much time as you need.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, would you read, would you not read, would you ask for a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I, one thing? I know it's taken...
You said already.
No, I know, I was just curious for the planning commissioners if they had anything before we do this.
Yes, you guys got anything to say over there? Dave?
Unmute, unmute.
Dave, you're on mute.
Dave?
I'm sorry, I thought I was off mute. Anyway, I, yeah, I would just comment that I think this is the right approach to take right now. I think the combination of lifting the moratorium and revising the text amendment gets us where we want to get for the time being. I would just caution that staff doesn't decide that they don't have a deadline now. We just, we need to stick with the deadline until...
Who was that and what did he say?
Just to make sure that staff meets the deadline.
That was Dave still?
That was John Davis.
Well, to stick to the deadline and go forward with more information. Thank you.
Henry, you understand you have a deadline?
Yes, staff does.
Okay, this is not infinity.
Correct.
Okay. All right, do we have a vote?
Are we ready for that?
You have a first, first, and a second with Dave, then we'll call for a vote.
The motion was Vienna and John was the second.
That's correct, yeah.
I'm here, yes. I seconded Ryan's motion.
Okay.
Mayor Batar?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
That passes with a 5-0 vote.
All right, then I would move for the property to the, the only property of Benita Cataract to the east, excluding... Cataract to the east, excluding Councilman Ebner, who I believe is recusing himself from this vote, for the same motion as before, which would be to direct staff to come back next week with a resolution lifting the moratorium on that piece of property and SP twenty-three, as well as continue to move forward with the process related to the text amendments following the timeline as outlined in the existing staff report.
Second? It's two weeks.
The night.
It'll be the next council meeting.
Whatever it is, sure.
We have a second by Weber?
Councilmember Weber?
Second.
Call for a vote?
Mayor Bedar?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertone?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ebner? Councilmember Ebner?
Councilmember Ebner has a conflict, so he's recusing himself.
Sorry. Mayor Protem Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
That passes by a four-two-zero, with Councilmember Ebner abstaining.
Okay. Do we finally get through this? Okay. I want to thank the planning commission for joining us tonight. I'm sure that at some point, we're going to get past this COVID-nineteen thing and be able to start having hearings and people actually sitting in the audience who we can understand. I want to also thank the people who called in. Sorry if there was some kind of difficulty with the communications, but thank you for trying to participate. Okay? We're going to adjourn the planning commission meeting at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Goodbye.
Bye.
All right, we'll now go to oral communications. Members in the audience, speakers are limited to five minutes and as determined by the chair. Okay, do we have any calls? John?
One? Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, I was just wondering if the city can get an update from staff about Scott Wiener's SP nine-oh-two planning and zoning? That's all. Bye.
Is somebody prepared to talk about that tonight, or are you?
I, I actually planned to bring that up in my comments. I'll be asking for staff to bring a report back and a position letter from council, so.
And we've already been in the process of reviewing the state legislation, so in the near future, we were just holding off due to the COVID-nineteen.
Okay. Thank you. City manager?
One more.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said the only one.
All right.
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Good evening, this is Gary Endery. Just a couple of comments. One, just kind of reemphasize something that Jan spoke about earlier, that is how to get the word out to everybody about things that are on the agenda. I kind of talked to you guys about that last week on some of the things that I thought could be done. And I don't know if I want to go as far as having a press piece, so this, this, read it in the newspaper if it gets printed, or what, but certainly have it in on the city website, on the front page, I think would be important, because that's what people see most of the time when they go there and look at the updates. I know we did that on the homeless problem, and I'd like to see us do that on the budget also. That might be something that, that council can give their input on when they have their oral communications. But also, I want to make some comments in regards to the budget and especially the parks in Rec. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Hector about it, sitting here doing some figures and some thinking to myself on some of the things that are proposed. I would say that Brad Stewart is basically doing the job of two people right now, which I don't think is fair to him, because he's in a new position plus his old position. It's not fair to the community, it's not fair to the residents, and I think it's fair to the city. That's just too much for one person to handle, but I feel that Brad's doing an excellent job in all my relationships with him and Freedom Park and the Monument and everything. But I, I think you should give some consideration of definitely taking a look at, at that situation. The reorganization of the department as I see it, as Hector brought it to you tonight, sounds good to me. I think it saves the city money and it would increase the revenue. I think people would utilize the plumber building a lot more if it was upgraded and a good sound system in it and everything, and there's, there's a lot of opportunities there to improve and to get more business in. And I'm sure the residents would be happier with improved plumber building than to have a parking ticket on their windshield. So you might want to look at that a little bit more closely in regards to generating more income. Of course, we talked about the Walker House and the income that brings to the city, but I won't get into that. But in any case, I think they can raise more funds through the use of the plumber building, which again would be a benefit to the city. That's it, that's all I have for tonight. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, any other calls? One more?
Thank you for calling, you're live.
Hi, city council, this is Mr. Gonzalez, resident of San Dimas. I'm not trying to pass any scorn on you, but you are completely wrong on not extending the moratorium. You're being reactive, not proactive. It's just because somebody wants to develop their property, you basically are giving in to them. And personally, I don't think it's fair to the residents down there, and I don't think it's fair to the cities withstanding as far as a quality-type community. There's a lot of people down there in that area that are fixing up their houses, and they're doing a good job. And if I believe I have five minutes, is that correct?
Yes, you do.
I'm not trying to pass scorn on you, but I don't like you being reactive. You are reacting to someone who wants to build things that have already been said that they should not have been built. Now, I have suggested to you many times that we need to be active. We have to be ahead and not get to the point of yes. Sometimes we have to say no. I specifically mentioned to the mayor, in the area that I live, and to meet the state requirements, we should sell the golf course. It's worth millions of dollars. And get a company like the Toll Brothers to build us homes there. And they would be able to build, I would think, in my experience, eight hundred homes of different qualities, of different products. It would increase the property taxes in the city. It would reduce the traffic and the extreme volume of traffic. I'm not, I'm not against golf per se, but we've got to meet some state requirements. And you have to take responsibility for not doing that, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. Mr. Weber, I don't know you very well, I've seen you in public safety commissions, but I don't like us being reactive. We need to be active. We have to listen to the community. Now, I don't live down there, but I've seen down there, and I have been at gadfly, as I've mentioned to Mr. Bertone, a gadfly is not a negative thing. I have been on the design, planning review board for eight years. I was on the general plan advisory committee. I'm on the public safety commission now, and that's because I care. I care about you. I care about my fellow residents here. Why can't you sell the golf course, which I don't know, you know, I'm not a pro or against golf, but I know one thing, they race up and down the street, and, you know, they drink at the bar, they have parties at the bar, and they just trash up the place. Now, I'm not against the people there, but you know what I'm talking about. And if, if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong. But we own that property, and it costs us money. And I know we make a little bit of money, but I can guarantee you, you have at least forty acres where you could build at least eight hundred homes. But no, you're going to give these guys that came to you and want to develop something and go against what the public wants just to keep him happy. I'm not happy with that. I think you're being reactive, not active. You need to be active. For all these years, you've had requirements to build homes, and you refuse to have done it. All the adjacent cities have done it, from Glendora to Laverne to Azusa. They're, they don't, they're not at the same, they might be in a different financial situation, but they're not breaking the law. I don't understand how we can be a double-A rated city money-wise but not comply with the law as far as building homes. Mr. Weber, listen to me, you're new. Do not be reactive, be active. And I'm suggesting to you that you made a mistake tonight, big time with this project. You're just causing trouble for yourself. Not you, Mr. Weber, the entire council. But anyway, I appreciate you being, I appreciate being in America, I appreciate having public meetings, I appreciate you letting me talk to you. I'm not trying to scorn you in any way, but you must be active and not reactive.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you, sir.
Any more, John? No more, no more. Seeing that we have no more, Mr. City Manager?
It's Mayor and City Council of a couple items I'd like to update you on. Throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic, city employees have continued to regularly report to City Hall with some modifications. Starting last Monday, city staff is reporting to city facilities on a regular schedule. All, almost all city services have continued throughout the pandemic with limitations on certain programs due to COVID-nineteen restrictions. The city hall is in the process of implementing safety precautions due to COVID-nineteen pandemic and will be opening to the public in the next couple of weeks. Once we have those safety precautions in place, we will be advertising any change in, in status on social media and on our website and our media outlets. The state public health officer has issued guidelines regarding the roadmap to modify the state home order, guidance to the county governments, which includes the option to apply for variants from the state. And just before tonight's budget study session, LA County announced it has achieved the necessary readiness criteria and will apply for a variance with the state of California tomorrow. If granted, the variants from the state's public health order will allow Los Angeles County to further advance in stage two and into stage three of the state's roadmap to recovery. In addition, LA County will align with the public health orders issued by the state to ensure consistency as the region progresses in reopening. The Los Angeles County Health Officer is drafting these documents, which should be available in the near future. And the county is moving towards additional phases in stage two and stage three, and will announce the immediate reopening of in-person shopping and houses of worship and await the state's clearance for reopening in-person dining and personal care, which would include hair salons and barber shops. Another update, the governor also announced California's Connected, the state's comprehensive contact tracing program and public awareness campaign. As part of the California Connected, public health workers in the communities across the state will connect with individuals who test positive for COVID-nineteen and work with them and the people they are in close contact with to ensure they have access to confidential testing as well as medical care and other services to provide, to help prevent the spread of COVID. Beginning this week, Californians across the state will hear radio ads and see billboards, social media posts, videos in multiple language encouraging them to answer the call to slow the spread. Public health workers across the state will be identified and caller ID as CA COVID team, and they will call, text, and email individuals who test positive for COVID-nineteen. And lastly, homeless outreach. To keep the public informed, the city's homeless program, of the city's homeless program and efforts, staff is creating a homeless page on the housing resource section of the city's website that will include the homeless plan, implementation awards and program funding, updates on our, our current outreach efforts, information on how to report homeless individuals for outreach, and homeless diversion and prevention resources. This can be passed on to community members and available. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Brad, this is John. Have you been able to look into that idea of having more outdoor dining or spaces available for restaurants to seat their patrons when they open up pretty soon?
Yes, I started conversations with, with directors on opportunities and how we can be as lax as possible to encourage individuals visiting restaurants in, in the community. And in addition, just today, we did find out from the San Dimas High School principal that they're going to be moving forward with a parade, so we're working with them and being as flexible as possible to allow them, however they want the parade, to, to move through the city or the downtown to be accommodating as possible. But we will be moving forward and reaching out to some of the restaurants to see how we can accommodate any outdoor dining.
Okay. I mean, I know there's some strict rules about where the tables can be placed and all that kind of stuff, but I'm just thinking for this, while the order is in effect, staff distancing, which may be for a while, but, so yeah, I'm glad to hear you're looking at that to see what areas we can let restaurants put tables in.
Yeah, and in addition to that, we are working with the chamber, who has given us updates on businesses that are opening, and we're going to be highlighting those businesses and restaurants on our media outlets, just to let people know that they are open and how they're complying and being safe, providing a safe environment for their clientele.
Great, thanks.
Okay, members of the city council who, pardon me?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. It's okay.
I'm sorry, city attorney. Members of the city council who've attended any meetings the city paid for? Members of the city council?
I've got number one here, confirmation representative of the council association of governments.
Oh, you got some-
Yeah, and I spoke to John. John said he'd be willing to take that petition over, and it's funny, he wanted to be the alternate, he had to be the alternate, but if someone else likes to be the alternate.
If someone else would like to be the alternate, that's also fine.
So is that the COG?
This is not the COG, this is the Southern California Association of Governments. And what it is, it's a general assembly, it's one meeting a year. It's not the regional council where you make all the decisions. It's the general assembly where you go and you hear speeches and they tell you all the good things they did. And John said he would like to be the representative, and that's fine with me, if there's no objection from the city council.
John, are you there?
Yeah.
Are you understanding that Dennis is just passing another job on to you?
Sounds good. Maybe I can infiltrate that organization and see what they're up to, because we seem to get a lot of stuff from them that we have to do. Anyway, but yeah, I'd be happy to.
Would someone else like to be the alternate?
So we're looking for an alternate?
I don't mind.
Okay, Eric saying he'll be your alternate?
I, just the man I was thinking about. Great.
Okay. Does anybody on the council have a problem with making John the representative of the Southern California Association of Governments? And Eric being the alternate?
Nope.
Okay. I, I'd kind of thought that we were going to do all of those things when we settled down here.
So did I, but it was on there, I didn't thought.
We, we needed to do this tonight because there is an upcoming meeting, and they wanted confirmation of who the delegates were.
Oh, so that's good, John, you got a meeting, and it'll be like, right, right away. Oh, so that's good, John. You got a meeting, and it'll be right away, and then you won't have another meeting for another year.
Yeah, Dennis neglected to mention that a meeting was coming right up, but still good.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's.
Madam clerk, that madam secretary, madam, whatever you want to be? No, that's not going to happen for, well, I guess it could. All right, council members' comments. We'll start with John.
Oh, yeah, just one comment, really. And that's, we didn't really, I understand now why that chart for housing was in the staff report. I think I and a lot of other people took it like it was farther along than it really is. So I appreciate the clarification on that. I will say that in looking at that chart and kind of analyzing it, over half of the units of those 1,245 would end up being downtown or right near downtown, you know, in the order of six, almost 700 units. So I want to make sure that we don't put the majority or over half of the units right in the downtown area, and, you know, for whatever the height of those buildings is, to be there for the residents of downtown. I'm on record as wanting and being open to higher density in some areas, and, you know, maybe even three stories. But it'll be good to know when they do the analysis what these buildings actually look like, because I don't think we're looking for five and six-story buildings in San Dimas. And that's about it.
Thank you, John. We'll go off to Eric.
I just want to touch, since nobody has yet, on the Antonovich Trailhead. I think there's going to be a few people that'll say something about that. But I, this weekend, I did notice there was an influx of people there that were using the trailhead, which I suppose is to be expected with it being a holiday weekend. However, there was the associated parking issues. I think the sheriff's department went out there and did do some enforcement, which was great. But one additional comment that wasn't brought up in the enforcement side of it was the trash that gets left behind on the side of San Dimas Avenue. It was pretty, it was pretty bad when I drove around this morning even. So perhaps just an idea of throwing out some additional trash cans along the parking area, since it extends north on San Dimas Ave, pretty far down where it didn't before. Making those trash cans available might get people to use them. It may not. And then also, just to thanks to the Parks and Rec Department and San Dimas Heroes for their work dressing up Freedom Park for Memorial Day. My son and I went down there, walked around for a bit on Monday, and it really looked good, and I think represented the city well. So thank you for everybody involved in that.
Ryan?
Oh, my turn. You know, a couple things, as it relates to SB 23 and that whole debacle. You know, I did catch a piece of what someone was saying, and to be clear, a vote to lift the moratorium does not mean we condone heavy industrial uses or anything like that. As a matter of fact, I think the course of action probably is the most amenable and good compromise, perhaps, to get to where we need to be. It's easy to talk about how we should impose will upon somebody's property, but we have to be fair to property owners' rights. And these people are on a time right now, all of us are on a time, where people are being told to forgive rents, and landlords and owners are also at a disadvantage, to a certain degree, on a lot of their property, especially if they're renting property. So, you know, when I look at that property, I agree that there is some uses there that perhaps are antiquated or not fit well in that area, which is why I supported Councilman Ebner's compromise on that, as the way I see it. But I also appreciate lifting the moratorium and being respectful to the property owners for whom we told we'd spend six months, we're at eight months. So I think we're going to get where we wanted to go. I think that that's a good faith move on our part with those property owners to stay true to what we said we'd do. I think the capital in that will be priceless moving forward, especially should they ever decide to sell their property. So I, you know, while it's easy to tie up people's property and do those things and say, we're going to do, we're going to do, we also represent the government, and there is an owner there. And so while we represent the citizens, which I think we did tonight, I think we did that in a good way and a fair way, I would also point out that many people came out and spoke favorably of all of those businesses. So, you know, while it's easy to try and hold the line and keep the properties tied up, let's not forget that they've been good neighbors. I think they'll continue to be good neighbors, and they plan to be in this community moving forward. So I appreciate their patience with the city through all of this. I appreciate staff's efforts and the outreach and all of the meetings that were had on that specific issue. You know, we'll have our public hearing next week, and we'll go through that process as well. But I think we got to a good space for now that leaves us, I think, everybody happy when we get to move forward. Specifically with Senate Bill 902, Scott Wiener's bill, I'd like to see a report brought on that sooner than later before council, and I'd hope for a vote to oppose SB 902 and a letter to be sent. That would be consistent with the League of California Cities, LA County Division, and several other COGS from the area. I don't know that San Gabriel Valley COG has taken a position yet, but I do know there's other COGS that have opposed that. So if staff can do the research and bring back something to council soon, that'd be appreciated.
What's the number of the law?
Senate Bill 902. It's basically SB 50 Lite, I guess is the best way to frame it. So it's, it's all, it's Senate Bill 50, basically, but a much gutted version of it. So for Memorial Day, I just wanted to say thank you to all those that have served, to those that passed fighting for freedom. I wanted to acknowledge staff for the flowers and the things that we did at the monument. And I also want to acknowledge San Dimas Heroes Organization. They had flags and all kinds of stuff put out there, and they also did taps at three o'clock yesterday, which they streamed on Facebook. That was really nice, and I thought that was well done. To talk about Councilman Weber's point regarding the trailhead, I too heard about that this weekend. We coordinated with the sheriff's department, contacted the supervisor's office, and we got some action. I know Brad did a good job of keeping, I think, council, some of the council members informed about what was going on. We responded to it, we dealt with it. But for the people that live up in that community, and I think Sherry actually is working on looking at some parking mitigation efforts up there as well. But for the people that live up there, I saw some comments back about people being upset that we were enforcing because parking doubling up and what have you, because that's pushing people into the communities, into the neighborhoods. And so for every cause, you know, for every action, there's a reaction. It's a tricky nut to crack. I think staff's going to work a little bit to see if we can figure out how to redirect people, or maybe have a better public education campaign with the county, perhaps, on how people can access those trail sites. But please be patient with all of us as we work to figure that out. Also, Benelli Park Walking Path R11 was brought to my attention. I guess folks around Easter, R11 had been closed by a new management company, which I guess that path actually went through the RV park that was there. And now you can no longer get through there. It's actually been blocked off. It says closed, private property, no access. So I did reach out to the supervisor's office. I'm supposed to get a call from County Parks and Rec. I'm hoping we can figure out how to get that back open and available for folks. I guess it helps complete a loop. But if we cannot, then I'm sure life finds a way. People will find a way to get where they need to go. Last two things, just before the council meeting, the county announced that they would be reopening pools in multifamily developments. I hope that helps solve someone's issue in some of the trailer parks that we have, Charter Oaks Estates, I believe specifically. There were some inquiries about being able to access the pools and the spas. I had received, so the sooner we could get that up and running, the better for the folks that live in those places. And drive-ins were actually included as a permitted use. So I really am looking forward to hopefully seeing some traction. I do think we need to do at least one drive-in. It seems like people are pretty excited about it, and I think it's a good opportunity. And not all the restrictions have been lifted yet, so it's probably one of the few opportunities we can probably do at this point. Lastly, I appreciate the council being up on the dais together. I think it's important. I appreciate that a lot. I'm happy to hear we're looking to get to a place to reopen City Hall. I don't know how I feel, and I know Brad, we talked about it a little bit, about the cough glass and all that. I know the sheriff's station, there was a lot of discussion at one point about bulletproof glass and, you know, what that does in terms of putting barriers between us and the community. I don't know if that would be better served by having the face masks that, you know, you see a lot of places using versus putting glass up all the way across the counter space to separate staff from the community. I think everyone's trying to give as best they can during this difficult time, while being conscious of their safety. But I also think we start creating barriers between us and the community, and we've always have been pretty open and accessible, I think, to people and had open arms. So I just offer that as thought, as, you know, I know you're thinking about different ways to mitigate staff's exposure during this time. And, you know, I was thinking a lot about what that would look like, you know, and even today, when I walked up and saw the Plexiglas here, I don't know that I want to walk up and feel like I'm going to be locked in a cage during a council meeting, or that I want someone to come to City Hall and feel like they do when you go through a drive-through right now, where you've got all this glass up everywhere. But I also understand staff safety concerns, and if someone really feels that they need it, then I think we need to do whatever we can to make staff feel comfortable and safe. But I think there's a balancing act there, and I hope we strike it. And lastly, you know, when John comes back, we won't all fit up here. And so when he starts attending in person, and so I would propose to the council and for staff to maybe come back with a plan, is if we were to look at moving our council meetings over to the plumber building, I think we could all sit spaced out appropriately. I think we could get everybody we needed to into that space. I don't think the optics of having one council member sitting down at a different level than another, you know, has to be had. I think we have the space and the ability to do that and to do it responsibly with the physical distancing requirements. So I offer that for thought, but I am absolutely not opposed to going over to the plumber building. And if that means that we could get to a space to be able to more quickly allow the public to come, at least a managed number of the public to come and space out the seats appropriately, I'd be willing to do that, too. So that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Good idea, Ryan.
Thank you.
Dennis, you think you could do it in brevity?
First of all, I'm very anxious to see the City Hall open, and I'm actually working on it, and we want to do that as fast as possible. The other thing, this is very brief, is the COVID-19 shadow funding. The shadow government has given money to the states, has given money to cities worth $500,000, has given money to the county, and the COG is working with...
The COG is working with the county to try to get some of that money given to cities under $500,000, and also with the state. That's one of the things the COG is doing. That was brief enough, wasn't it?
Very, 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 very brief. Okay, because I'm going to talk longer than Ryan.
Start the timer.
Yeah, yeah. When Ryan talks about moving the council meeting over to the plumber building, I'd just like to remind everybody that we did do that at the senior hall during the move. So that might be a better situation to look at for doing it. So I...
If the council...
Pardon?
Sorry. If the council wants to have a discussion about that, we can bring it to a future agenda and have a discussion of that.
Because the senior hall worked out good for us during that period of time. I too was involved over the weekend, both Sunday and Monday, with the parking situation at Antonovich Trail. I visited the location both days. In fact, stepped in and kind of prevented, I don't know that prevented, but there was a couple people, you know, got into arguments and ready to go fisticuffs over people blocking their driveways and stuff. So at one point, there was 63 cars parked in the intersection of Paseo Garcia and Gracia and Loma Vista. So, you know, the sheriff's department is, you know, really making a roll. And like Ryan said, our public works is looking at a plan right now. One of the things that was interesting, I had a conversation with Carl Coles today, the superintendent of schools, and they were talking about a parade, and they wanted to do a partnership between us and the city and the school district for recognizing our seniors who are graduating that's not going to have a real, real type of graduation. So they're trying to put together something that works for our seniors and still do this social distancing. And, you know, there is a program that's going on right now, and I think it's been working really real well. And I don't know the actual coordinator with it, but I know that Alta Skinner is involved in it, where they've taken our seniors in our high school and reached out to the community, and they're doing, every week, every senior in a high school and also at Chaparral has been given, adopted by a family. So I think that's working out real well, where they do something, you know, for like several weeks in a row. Each week, they meet with them and take gifts and put banners out and things like that. So we, you know, what I want to say, thanks to the community for doing that, because I think it's very, very important. And so if this parade occurs, I hope that we all get involved in it. And I'm so, but thank you very much for showing our kids that we care. So that's about it. We're going to be moving into a closed session, a public employee appointment, a conference with labor negotiations, public employee appointment again, and the city council successor agency closed session, or the conference on real property. So five minutes after the adjournment, we'll meet into closed session. We reconvene the city council meeting with a report from our city attorney, Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session tonight to discuss the four items on the agenda. City council discussed all of those items, gave direction to staff, but there is no reportable action on any of those items tonight.
Any comments from council? Move adjournment.